Recording in progress.
Council study session for March 11th. Great to have you all here. We have a couple, three very important topics today and we're going to start with our 311 update, correct?
That's correct, council president. Council members, I would guess just turn it over to Jenna Bowman and team to give you an update on where we are with completing implementation of the 311 customer service system.
Awesome. Afternoon, everyone. As indicated, my name is Jenna Bowman and I have the privilege of serving the city as the strategic communications and engagement director. Kail Zhang will be joining me as we move through the slides, but we're just very excited to be here with you this afternoon. I don't know if planned, I can't take credit for it, but today is actually National 311 Day. So you're looking at the date, March 11th. Tammy, one of our teammates kicked us off today of just highlighting that celebration. So we'll walk through some updates with our 311 system. So first to ground us just in the work that was done in 2023, you might have recalled seeing some of our fellow teammates in front of you, both Heather Hayer and Jamie Wilson, as well as others. But there was a customer service evaluation done last year and through that, some information about how many calls the city receives annually, including that roughly 9,000 monthly calls could be answered by way of a 311 system. Seventy percent of the incoming calls were a direct from four of the 13 departments, community development, park and rec, city clerk, and public works, with an average call time of two minutes and 11 seconds. Just by way of recalling information, so this was the average monthly calls by department. You can see community development at just a, just close to 2,000 and then working very down. I do want to note, you're not seeing a couple of departments on here, that being the library and Rochester Public Utilities. That is specifically because it was not contemplated for 311 to be picking up those calls. I do want to be clear in saying that calls could come into 311, that we would then warm transfer or make connection to both of those departments. And then also just wanted to note, as we were working with departments, there was some conversation around some of these numbers possibly being a little bit under. And that just has to deal with when these numbers were pulled, all of the various phone numbers that were being pulled to gather this information. Some might be very familiar with 311, so this information being helpful, not only for you all as our elected officials, but for our teammates and members of the community. The second bullet to me is one of the things to be the most helpful. So the phone number 311 provides residents, visitors, and businesses access to non-emergency municipal services and is intended to part, intended in part to divert routine inquiries and non-urgent community concerns from the 911 number, which is reserved for emergency services. So just really important to note that 311, as we will hopefully see here and plan to see here in Rochester, but as we know through our colleagues across the nation is, it's a really big help in diverting numbers, especially from our non-emergency number or our non-emergency calls. And then as highlighted as a part of the information last year as well, but really grounding us in what our work is here with the benefits of the 311 system. So providing quality, consistent customer service citywide, facilitating greater resident engagement. And we'll highlight this later on, but that includes a greater ability to do self-service. So if we really are focused on making more information accessible, easy to find and navigate, hopefully for folks who want to have that level of self-service, that we're making improvements to our website and other things for them to get done what they hope to get done. Tracking responsiveness by departments and creating key performance metrics and indicators. We'll talk a little bit later about the dashboards and what you can expect to see, as well as really working closely with those departments, an understanding where we might have longer times of responsiveness, you know, what are things that we might be expecting? What are things we might not be expecting and how can we level those things up consistently across the organization? Providing comprehensive information to make data-driven decisions. Again, that comes back to the dashboard. How are we looking at numbers? How are we looking at information and how are we using that appropriately? And then enabling the city to analyze call drivers to directly inform our strategic communications engagement and equity efforts. And I'll talk a little bit about how our 311 team will work with our communication engagement team and others across the organization. All to say, really excited about the work that's ahead and I will turn it over to Kail Zhang to move us through a few more slides.
Members, council members, thank you for allowing us to give you a little glimpse at what we've been doing in the last two months here. Again, my name is Kao Zhang and if you're brave enough, it's Xiong in my language. So it's one of those things where, you know, you kind of had to silence that X. So anyways, try to start, start off on this framework here to understand that, you know, building a CRM is going to be, you know, really tough, especially from the ground up. It's just that it's one of those things where you gotta use a lot of energy, a lot of time to kind of lay out the groundwork and kind of build a strong foundation and identifying what needs to be done for the city as far as, you know, like what kind of service the city offers and so forth. Myself, I know this because I came from the state and I worked with one of the biggest CRM system in Minnesota. And that is, if you guys probably heard about it, but that's Men Drive. You guys heard of it? It's really, really big. Every one of us has some type of connection to it because it is a driver's license and you go to every DMV, it's there. It's going to take your information, it's going to log you in and so forth. So with that experience, I bring it to the city Rochester and trying to build that into our system to make it more efficient, making sure that the system allows us to be effective at the same time being easy for the user to kind of, you know, get into the system and use it for us so that we can better serve our citizens as they come through. On this slide, for the framework, to understand how the system works, you would have to kind of understand how the, you know, system is structured. So as you can see here, I know there's your, to the wheels onto the right-hand side of my right-hand side, that is. It's not all the department, but it's some of the department that we have been working with and it's not that we don't like the other department. It's just that we don't have enough space to put all the department in there and all the services in there. So keep that in mind. And our framework extends to our CRM provider, that is Catalyst. And they do a lot of ongoing support for us for the future and current and then system updates and so forth. And then also provides like some, like professional guidance for us to make sure that we understand how the system works. And if we can be assistant in the future, we can, you know, reach out to them and get help. Our next vendor here would be City Bot and I'll go more detail on it later on, but right now it's just touching base that, you know, this would be our AI chat box. And if you ever went into like a T-Mobile website or pretty much any customer service website, they now implement some type of AI chat box. And that is to make sure that, you know, you have easy access to their service, what they provide, and this does the same thing for the city of Rochester also. It pulls data from our website and services so that it can help our user to engage and explore more options as far as connecting to the city's services. Slide here, as you can see, the more way we can connect with our constituents and that's the citizen that, you know, lives within the city limits, we can better serve them. So using, you know, like our phone, website, our website, our app that we have in development right now, our AI supports email and text. So we have all that integrated into the 311 system. It's not going to be, you know, some of these might not be immediate, but they are working in the pipeline as far as getting them through the system. The iron them out, make sure all the bugs are out and make sure that we can provide a solid product once it's launched. And on the next slide here, I will have Jenna kind of introduce the 311 team and then we'll continue on as far as going through the system and how, you know, like how it works for constituents as we go forward.
So you've met Kail. So Kail Zhang is our 311 customer service supervisor. If you recall, back to November meeting, you all had approved our contract with Catalyst, the CRM provider, excuse me, as well as the creation of that 311 customer service supervisor. So we went through that recruitment process and Kail has been with us since early January. We have other members of the team with us today. So we have Leslie Durman, who just waved to us. Leslie comes to us by way of the community development department. So you might have recalled to our two customer service specialists by our, our current, we're current city teammates or positions that were allocated towards the 311 system. So Leslie comes, Leslie comes to us by way of community development, lots of knowledge and expertise in that area, including scheduling inspections, which will be a part of what the team helps with and takes over. We have Tammy Tim Brass, who's also, also with us. Tammy is in a limited term role with us. So both spends time with the 311 team as well as with helping out with facilities and a few other areas across the organization, but has really helped get this off the ground and we're very appreciative of having that support. And then Letitia Dorsey joins us as well as in, I think, week three. There we go, week three. So very new team, but really appreciative. So Letitia, Letitia's position came by way of a retirement with the city clerk's office. So as you think about the team, the one position that the city has added by way of approval was last November was our customer service supervisor. I mentioned too, getting back to the communication engagement team. So I have the privilege of working with both teams. And this, as we'll talk a little bit further, really is how we're unifying in this work and how we're using the information to really serve our residents, businesses, and visitors in the best way that we can. So Kail talked a little bit about the different ways in which folks can connect with our 311 system, right? So you heard about phone, website, the 311 city of Rochester specific, 311 branded app, the AI-supported chatbot, which Kail mentioned directly ties and it's coming from information on our website, email and then text message. Using real-time information, the overlay with how our communication engagement channels will respond is especially important in knowing how we will leverage the system. So I just wanted to share three specific ways how we can see this working. So we had a very limited time last week for the Park Mobile app was down. I think it was like maybe an hour. And our city clerk team was getting those calls and let me know right away that, hey, Park Mobile's down, we're getting calls, can you get the information out there? And I said, well, just wait in a couple of months, our 311 team will be answering those. But even in that instance, just like it will be with our 311 team, we will instantly know that those calls are coming in and Kail and the team will work with our communications team and get things up on the website, through social media, out in a press release and any other ways that we can get information out. So again, we're using that real-time call data and making adjustments. Similarly, we know that we get a lot of calls around the Fourth of July. Our 911 dispatchers will tell you, people are calling, asking them when the fireworks are at. We obviously don't want our emergency phone number being inundated with those calls. So one, we'll work to ensure that the information is out ahead of time through our various channels. But that's one of the things we'll want to check in on. Were we able to divert those calls in terms of people knowing that we have 311 and that they should be calling 311 to begin with, with any calls that we can help answer? But then two, over probably the next couple of years, tracking that information to see, did our call volume stay about the same with the same amount of questions or what can we do in terms of our marketing promotion around Fourth Fest to help ensure people are getting the information they need? And then similarly with our sidewalk improvement district, we know we have a set marketing communications plan for that sidewalk improvement district. Well, are we seeing increased calls come in during the spring or when people are seeing markings on their sidewalks? If we are, we want to work directly with the public works team and with our communication lead on that to say, where else do we need to be showing up? What else do we need to be doing? Not necessarily because we want the call volume to go down, but we know people are calling when they have questions or reaching out when they have the questions. But in fact, if we can start just to have that information out there, it's improving people needing to just not needing to even make that specific call. So we're really looking forward to using that real-time information to improve our communications. And obviously there's a direct overlay with what that means for your inboxes and your phone calls and how that can also help us make improvements. So I'm going to turn it back over to Kail to walk through just a couple of specific slides about City Bot as well as the backend that Catalyst 3, the Catalyst CRM system.
All right. So I promised I'll talk about City Bot and here we are again. So with City Bot, it's, it's, it's important to bring up because it does a lot of feature that we can't do. So like for languages and so forth, you know, not everybody has a language line or everybody on the team can speak all the language in the world. But, you know, City Bot has the ability to improvise and to support on at least 71 language as we know right now. And then the integration also works well with our CRM providers too. So the overlays would be really, really effective. And it also prevents a lot of the feature that, you know, do a lot of the calls that come in. You know, when they use this proper, this tool properly, they don't even need to call us. They just go and use the chatbot and the chatbot will pretty much direct them to where they need to go and as far as getting service or just getting some answers or some knowledge-based articles that, you know, it's out there on the website that they can't search for. This can help and this will prevent a lot of stress on the phone lines and so forth too. Going on to the next one here. So this is the, currently, this is what we have as far as the website. And this is going to mirror our app also. The only difference is that this one doesn't have like the, you know, touch tablet kind of feature that we have here. So this is, if someone, you know, goes into our website right now and like say, I wanted to do a request. So from top down, starting from the left-hand side here, my left-hand side. So the first thing they'll see would be the city page and then they'll have the option for you to do a request. So as you ask the user, click on the plus sign for requests. It will put, it will go down to the map and they will just pretty much drag that little yellow marker and put it anywhere on the map to where they need this, where they're at or what kind of service they're looking for. And then that would direct them to the bottom side, which, and I'm sorry, it's a little bit small here, but you know, try to cramp everything into that little screen. It's kind of hard. So all the way down there, it tells you what service you need and so forth. So once they pick their service, it takes them to the next slide, which would be the arrow following to my right here. They'll just need to put down their information. It gives them the knowledge article, you know, it tells them, you know, what this means. You know, they can do a self-serve, they can go ahead and click on the link, a URL and so forth. And then, you know, once they put down their information, they just have a comment in there, they can put a comment in there and then click on next. As you can see, the last portion, it just tells you, you know, thank you for the requests, we're working on it. We'll get back to you as soon as something comes up or somebody works on it and that is it. So as long as they register for an account with the city and they have like a valid email, these update will go to their email and update to them about the service that's being requested by them. So this is what they need. It's very simple, couple of steps gets you to the service that they need. And then on the next slide here, this is where we see on our end. So the specialists will see it on our end. As you can see here on that bigger portion of the screen there, the bottom portion, it will tell us, you know, if a service quest has been sent to us. And there's an example right down there on the bottom where it says, I believe, search result. And that is where, you know, like all the requests comes in. So we see it as soon as they send it through that request, we see it in our, in our to-do list, I guess, and then this queue that comes up. So we see it, we click on it and then to your top right on that first window. I'm sorry, again, it's a little bit small, but you can see the details that comes in. So we can go in there and look at the detail, what is it for, who is it for, and the route that it's went to. So it's for the fire department, it goes straight to whoever that's in charge of that email account. If it's to forestry or to parks and recs, that email goes to where that request goes to, it's in the mailbox and they can look at it. And then as you can see down on the bottom, it tells you where it's at, what is it for. And then the, the map that we have designed, it's all geofenced within the city. So it can, and this map, this map is interactive for us so we can go and look at the detail of it as far as, you know, where it's at, the exact location, what street, is it on, you know, the, the public highway as far as the state versus the county versus the city, who's responsible for servicing to those corners. So it's all laid out. So we know exactly, you know, if it's a county highway, we'll go, well, we don't do city service out there because we're not responsible for that. But we will take note of it also. Yes.
Can I ask a quick question on that as follow-up? So would you notify the county if there's something coming in or only if there's a trend? Or what would trigger a notification to a different agency that's?
Sure. Yeah, that will be communicated. We haven't said anything in stone yet, but as far as communication to the county, kind of work with them and how they want us to relay some information from them. Cause I know they might have a, you know, vast, vast interest in us also for this because, you know, it does cover a lot of the stuff that they work for. The citizen that lives in the city and make sure that, you know, we are providing information to our counterpart also for the county. So we haven't had any communication with them yet, but I know that it's one of those things that we need to reach out and provide some type of communication with the county.
That would be great because people do not always know what's relevant to the city or the county. So wonderful. Council member Dennis, sorry, I thought we were waiting to the end for questions. I have a lot, a couple of questions real quick. Back to when you hired City Bot, was there competitive bidding? What was the process to make sure that that was the ideal company for price, everything?
Yeah. So as far as City Bot, so City Bot specifically works with cities.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm chat box or what?
City Bot is the AI-supported chatbot. So they work with both cities and counties, that's the specific, and with 311 systems. So as far as the provider is available and the type, that is who we elected to work with. And also the fact that it can seamlessly integrate with our CRM provider.
Okay. So there wasn't other options to make sure that the best price for taxpayers? I mean, that was kind of the one that was the only option for the city?
We were aware of who we could work with and as far as going through the process of selecting a provider who would work with our CRM provider. Yes, the right group that could do that.
Okay, but not the only one, but the one, okay, just want to clarify to make sure that every taxpayer dollar is spent wisely. And then the language barriers, like I went just a few minutes ago to make, because I see closed captioning is not available right now for people here. And I was informed that it is available now on Zoom and so, but when people have barriers such as disability barriers with, you know, people who struggle with screens, like maybe people, my own experience with neurodivergency or people who have language, like I hear language is wonderful, like you have a lot of 71, amazing. So that's fabulous. There's cuts on the language barrier, but with, with challenges of sight and different other barriers, what has this done to overcome those?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have been working closely with both Chao Matela and Jacob Metz in the context of how we are continuing to address access just globally. But as highlighted in all the different ways that folks will be able to engage with 311, that's from phone to, to online. So I mean, that will include likely a language access overlay, so the language line in addition. But we are very mindful of any sort of accessibility challenges. So working with our CRM provider as well as our internal teammates. But that's the nice thing about our 311 system and service is that the ability to connect at just about any, any different point is an option.
Okay. Cause I know some people who have different needs gets very frustrated when they get to tele, you know, teleprompters and, you know, we're kind of going that route in our world. So it's confusing for some who, who challenge.
This one, if they call 311, they will, they will get an actual person.
They will get that.
Yep. And as far as what Kail is showing in terms of these inputs on the previous screen, if they're calling, that will all be done by one of our 311 customer service specialists.
Wonderful. And just to clarify, like, so if I am a resident and I've worked with certain staff member, I can, I can call 311 and say, I want to talk to Dylan Nebraska or I want to talk to Wendy Torrey or, you know, whoever it, they can, they can request to talk to the specific staff member that they have been working with, or do they have to go through the whole process to be?
Thank you, council member. The value of the 311 is it creates a ticket. So the ticket ensures that by going through 311, a ticket is created and routed to the appropriate party. As well as the fact that they're not needing to call two or three times to check on their inquiry. They will, we will automatically have a track. So if they're, if they had reached out about something as it relates to community development and inspections or building inquiry or anything like that, this ticket tracks that to ensure we know the steps of the process that it's going through.
They can get to the same staff, because I know that, that's where communication sometimes lost is when you talk to one staff and then you talk to someone else and you're like, oh, I just told my story to the first person, you know, so, so this will, I just want to prevent like phone tag.
The ticket will keep track. So when the, when a customer service specialist talks to a community member, they would take all that information in, input it on the ticket. And as Kail is showing here, this is the backend of what the team sees. So whether that's a member of our 311 team or that's a member of community development, they can see the entire history of that call. So we're not, that's a big part of what we're, we're not asking community members to do time and time again is whether they're transferred or they need a phone call back, they're not relaying the same information to save them and as well as the city, the time and effort.
Just to clarify, if I have a direct line number to like the plumbing inspector, I can still call the plumbing inspector?
Yes.
That's, that's what's important. Thanks.
All right. Let's continue on and we'll have questions after.
Sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on, next slide here, and this is our 311 dashboard reporting. So what this entails is it does a lot of customization as far as reporting real-time data. So if anytime any, any data goes into the system, it takes less than five seconds to kind of update the system. For this one also, we can track a lot of like the overall scope of the city services. So if there's a lot more calls to, let's say, park and rec, we can track that versus, you know, like the fire department or to public works or to utility also. So we can track, you know, like how much calls go in there or ask people, the type of question they're asking or what kind of service they're requesting from those departments. And, you know, making sure that, that these departments are actually, you know, following up on these tickets and these services requests too. And then it comes back to us and say that, okay, well, this sort of 10, 10 tickets have been sent to public works. 10 comes back as being finished and done, completed, or it could be eight, only four or five or so forth. So we can track all that with this dashboard reporting. So we can see it every morning and they'll track it for us. And then as you can see, right on the left, right end on my side, there's that little list of information and, you know, like the little custom fields, what we call it. And those we can custom field to look at specific data if you're looking for a specific question or how, and I'll move on to the next slide and they'll represent that. So on this one is our custom fields. As you can see there on the data, I just pull up, you know, like the departments, who has how many quests are open, how many quests are closed and how many are on hold and how many on total and so forth. And then on the right-hand side, it also, we can custom feel and look, customize the research to what type of these requests will be. As you can see, you know, like abandoned cars, sounds, trees, street lights and whatnot too. So we can track how many of those requests are coming in, we're at and so forth. So a lot of feature, unique feature that we can go into. So a lot of uh feature, unique feature that we can go into and get data on and get direct reporting, so. Onto this one, I will.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
So, so what happens is often people will directly con- contact their council member. I mean, I imagine, I see all of us have received an incredible amount of emails for the Silver Lake uh project coming up. And I really like to be in the know, so that I can go directly to the resident. Uh there, you know, I take pictures of their potholes and talk to about the playground equipment and and be really involved in making sure that things are done for the people uh in our community and our neighborhoods. How is the council member is going to be looped into all of this? So there's data collection, so if someone, the city's being um told that we need to go three-one-one for all of our calls, how is it going to be guaranteed that that council member is looped into all of the concerns in their specific ward?
Uh, thank you, councilmember. I mean, the piece that I would say is, as Kale indicated, there's an ability to pull reports. So I mean, if there was a desire to see the reports, um specific reports as it relates to wards or overall. Um we could be working with people to provide that information.
So the council member will have to routinely get reports to find out what issues have been called about in their ward? Just to clarify.
I would just remind us that the city receives nine thousand calls a month already. This is just channeling them into a very productive, efficient system. So there are a lot of calls already happening in the ward that you're currently not receiving reports.
Well, and we probably should be receiving reports on those as well. I'm just saying that this seems to be a way of, you know, whatever words we use, streamlining. But to um take, I mean, people who are right now calling and connecting and texting and emailing myself and the my council colleagues might be, say, well, okay, we're supposed to now do the three-one-one. And so the calls that we have been receiving, that we have been down grassroots helping with, um will now be going to three-one-one. So I'm not sure if I'm wording this correctly, but how are we guaranteed to make sure that we can still be that active voice? Because I mean, that's what I feel is important with uh representative democracy is to have people who know what's going on in their community. So we can um amplify and be there for residents.
I think that a lot of the questions are really just routine city business, asking about a process internally. So if there's a need or a policy question related to Silver Lake, absolutely, the council members are still the right person to reach out to. They wouldn't be directed to three-one-one.
That seems confusing though, I think, like if if someone has an issue with their pothole, I mean, using pothole or playground equipment, I mean, there's so many issues that we we deal with. Um but what, what's, um, I mean, I feel very strongly that that um a job of council members to know that, oh, there's a speed issue in this neighborhood. We want to really make sure we advocate for the people to make sure their dogs, like in Ward Six, aren't getting killed crossing, you know, like, oh, I won't go into my all the issues and speed, but that is something that I feel the people who especially aren't struggling in in different areas of town need to have their council member involved in, so that 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 things can be done. And I just want to make sure that council members are now still receiving the same information, even if um constituents and residents are being referred to this program that that they would have and otherwise called a council member for.
So councilmember Dennis, councilmembers, I think the key here has been tried to be pointed out is that the goal for this is that whether someone has direct access to a council member or not, we're applying our policies across the entire community. So typically, people don't advocate for something unique for a specific individual, they connect um someone to the right teammate to be able to provide them the information. For example, the neighborhood traffic um improvement program for them to go through that process, to do the petition. So that we don't leapfrog something over another project that's already been in the works for some period of time. So certainly, people can still reach out to their council member. We would still encourage, and this works in communities across the United States that have elected officials um to to, you know, self-help them, and so they don't have to have multiple different points in between. Whether they can always, sometimes it ends up being that they reach out to their council member after, if they didn't like the result from three-one-one. If we're applying the policy and they want to have the first street hole, street pothole filled. Um perhaps they might still reach out to their council member or the entire council, um but this helps them to actually be logged into the system so that we can be understanding as a city as a whole, how our processes are working for people, and they don't have to reach any one person. They can always be reaching out here, it's tracked and we're able to do that. So the intent wouldn't be to continuously be updating the council, who are the legislative policymakers of the city on operational work that's happening across the community every hour of every day um already. And also will continue to happen through the three-one-one system.
Just, I agree, I agree, I agree with your statement about having more data collection and make sure we track that. Make sure that no, no one's voices, no one's calls.
Point of order, President Carlson.
I have to clarify.
A point of, point of order.
Councilmember Keen has the floor, thank you.
I I think we've got six other councilmembers here still to ask questions. We have two other topics. I think you've made a Councilmember Dennis has made her point, and I think it's time for this meeting to move on.
I have an important point of clarification.
That's my point.
Don't have the floor at the moment.
Well, this is out of order. I would like the clerk to determine whether or not a point of clarification takes the floor.
You are out of order, point of order takes the floor.
There was misinformation just presented.
Member Keen said.
I would like to clarify the misinformation. All councilmembers, every resident has the ability to contact the council member. That's all.
Madam President.
That was my clarification. Thank you.
Madam President may have the floor?
Yes.
I think all of you understand, and we recently discussed, you don't have the floor unless you're recognized by the president. She has an obligation to try to run an orderly meeting. She's moving on with the conversation.
Yes, thank you. I had a couple of comments, and then we'll move on to Councilmember Keen and others. So first of all, welcome to our team. This is so exciting to see you all in real life and up and running. Thank you for being here and taking this really important work on. It's just fantastic, and I think this is truly an example of our responsiveness to our community and figuring out how to be more efficient and effective as a government, how to build in that accountability, see how we're doing. And follow up and have a way of really formally tracking and taking a look at where there are outstanding needs. And just finally, the idea of being able to then be more proactive if there are consistent things coming up that we need to get that messaging out. So people don't have to waste their time looking into it, or, you know, it's already reaching them through other channels, that's just really a strong approach. So thank you. Uh I have been really looking forward to this update, and you guys did a wonderful job. Thank you. Councilmember Keen?
Um, yeah, thanks. And again, I appreciate you guys being here. I've been looking forward to this for, I think we've heard about this back and forth for two years. But I'm looking forward to, eagerly looking forward to a July launch. Does that, do I think I have that right?
Uh, yes, and I'm happy to run through this.
Let me just bring my two or three points and see, we'll see, we'll go from there. Um again, I I believe, listening to this now, we're branding this as three-one-one. That's sort of the nomenclature we're going to use. I have a little concern there, it sounds like a phone system. And in my mind's eye, as I've worked through this, this is a problem management system. And I'm, do you have any concerns in marketing-wise that this just sounds like a phone system?
Uh, Councilmember, really good question and something that we have had internal conversations on, as well as conversations with our colleagues. Um, our last slide in the presentation, I'm just going to get to it, um is really how we've been, excuse me, building our network. Um, we're really fortunate that there are two wonderful associations um that bring folks together, so Engage Three-One-One. Um and then an Association of Government Contact Center Professionals. Um we have had conversations uh with Engage Toledo as well as um Evanston and uh the city of Mankato. We are working to connect with Minneapolis, and we brought that exact question up because we were talking about that as a team in terms of um how we, how we brand and and market this. And really, because of the adoption of three-one-one holistically, kind of as an industry. We really feel like if you're coming from another community, as well as, you know, our our number of visitors that visit Rochester. Um that using that three-one-one terminology is important. I think to your point, though, Councilmember, it really does then get into specifics about how we will market and communicate this service. And that really gets back to that earlier slide of folks knowing they can pick up the phone, they can go online, they can download an app and use it. However, they would like to receive the service and engage with the service, we are here to do that with them. So um I think that will be a big part of our role in working with all of you, is to be communicating that message and helping folks ensure it's you know, not just the phone, um including as how hands-on or how hands-off um they would like to be in terms of getting their information or taking care of things themselves. We are here to support and supplement that to whatever, you know, really to whatever level works for them as well.
Very good, that's, that's very helpful. Um I I did hear CRM a couple of times, and I believe that's customer relationship management. And I, again, I had this thing in my mind's eye was problem management as opposed to, I mean, are we going to? I mean, that made me think that we're going to know that this resident called four times in the last six months. Are we tracking anything like that?
It's not really about that, it's really more about the ticket and service. So it's, it's really ensuring that on our end as a city organization. We're helping address those problems, concerns, issues in a timely fashion, which I think we can't underscore enough to the knowledge-based articles, so what would pop up? Someone might get exactly what they need in terms of who to contact, where to go to, that might not even result in a ticket. If we're doing our job well and working with all of our departments and service areas, that it's really an information tool.
That's helpful. So my second area of concern was um privacy versus transparency. And that sort of trade-off in in municipal services that um, as as example, Councilmember Dennis talks about, can I write, call in and say I want to know all the things that are in these addresses by by person, or is there some reason that from a data privacy we want to protect who's calling in, or we want to make sure they know, if you opened into the system, you're, it's public information?
Yep, and the team's been working directly with our city attorney as well as others in the context of um the starts and stops of access to information.
Okay, so that's still, it's still.
We're still working through, part of it is the ongoing setup of our eight-by-eight phone system, um the integration's starting to work with um uh City Bot as well as just furthering um our work to get the system up and off the ground.
Okay, good, that that's, again, good to know. I know we still have some, some months left with this. I I think we all come to this with like four or five narratives, or like use cases in our head. I'm thinking of the person who called about tree trimming, or the example you used here, somebody else will call about um, you don't trim trees enough. And it's, they're very different levels of closure on there. So my question on the system, then, when I look at this, has we been, do we have metrics? Like if I looked at something and said that's been open for forty-five days, I want to think that's an issue. I have, have we allowed for the idea that, no, I mean, somebody who was concerned about a policy thing and they want to have it, have an open issue. It could sit open for three years, but I, in my mind, I'm thinking this is three-one-one, this is open to action, close.
Actually, a quick follow-up on that, would the direction be, this is something you should contact your council member about if it is a policy-related?
I I would say most likely, I just, two of the different entities that are on the groups that have been reached out to are cities that I've worked at. So um it's really more about closure of the loop of communication. So if someone calls in and says, I'm really concerned about um where people will be able, I'll just use a current day issue, be able to smoke cannabis. Um so that would probably be more, we provide some basic information, where are we at today? Um maybe even give them a link to some of the resources that we have through the League of Minnesota Cities. But say that if it's something that you really think is important for the city council to take up, then, you know, we would recommend that you reach out to your council member, ask where they live, provide the information. Um if it's something that's really something we already have a process for, again, it's often about providing um the connection point. So if something happens in the winter that can't be resolved until spring, because weather has to be better to do some sort of work. Um then it's about putting the flag in to say, letting them know that, you know, you should be expecting follow-up from us after we've given you this call. Around this time is when we typically expect the temperatures, and so um we, you know, will be following up and it puts a flag on it. And we know that it becomes more of an active rather than on-hold ticket. And we can continue to build out policies to say, are we going to send out a red flag report to departments if they're X amount behind on follow-up um for certain things, or know that, well, we have got a lot going on here that isn't what people expect. But it's really more, and most people generally are looking for the the closure from the initial call to being responded to, not necessarily to the actual final result, depending on how complicated it is. So I think of it not necessarily as problem management, but as problem solving.
Okay.
And information that helps us know if the way that we've been solving problems isn't actually producing the type of impact that is desired in the community.
Yep, that that's helpful. The la- last thing, just when I look at the timeline, and I know there's sandboxing, I appreciate the sort of testing and making sure we know what we're doing. Um I didn't see any budget or anything for marketing, or how people in the community will know that there's a, a launch. Is that, are we just hoping for the best, or is there some sort of?
Do not know me better than that. No, and that's why, no, that's, that's also, it's a great question, and I think, you know, that we will be very thoughtful in the marketing communications approach. Um there is uh some level of budget that comes along with this project, that has been walking with this project um all along. Um one of the key things we heard from every community that we talked to was, you gotta get it right to begin with, right? It's really hard to walk back, you all know well, it's hard to walk back for customer service. The team is very mindful of that. I think we're all reminding ourselves every single day, including as we work with departments and learning and hearing how they best serve community members today, residents, business, visitors. So I, you know, Councilmember, I would say, we want to be mindful that uh as we go into initial implementation and full implementation. We're walking that line, it's not like we're, it's a secret, I mean, clearly today, we should be clear with folks, you cannot go and access three-one-one today. What you're seeing, seeing, um even in the information Kale provided, um and those numbers are all tests, that's what we're doing internally. Um but we will move into a level of marketing.
No, that answers it well, that you're kind of like, you're trying to make, grow it up slowly and make sure.
Exactly. I mean, to be completely honest, you'll probably, it'll probably be fall or into early next year when you're seeing full-fledged. Like you can recognize we're really actively marketing, communicating it, and that's just to ensure, you know, as we are building confidence throughout the process. That we feel like it's the right time and place to be actively marketing the service. I'll also just say, we're, we will be working with departments and service areas where we have to help um folks know, like, okay, three-one-one for this. But if you have this, this is still who you want to be probably reaching out to. So in the category of like rental inspections, that will still stay with community development. It's not that three-one-one can't help, but just relearnings or teaching some of those new.
This is very helpful, again, appreciate, and I appreciate uh Senator Elms that that thing about this is really like getting them to the right thing. It is, this is a communications link, um but but I am also, in my mind, I'm trying to look at the status of these things. And like if this, if, I I don't, I'm, I hope we don't use this to say, oh, we have to do more tree trimming. We should, we should have our same policy backing, and these are just responsiveness as opposed to, we're going to change our ways with it.
All right, we have a couple of other comments or questions, Councilmember Wall?
Thank you. I suspect that if this is uh understood and embraced by the community, it will be a great relief. Uh, you know, if I have a snow problem, do I call community, what do they call that? Or or do I, is it Public Works, or I mean, it's the same place, and and this will be a one-stop that I will get directed to the right place. So I think this is a really a a great thing. Uh, two questions. Uh I would more likely would use the online, and I saw two pictures of the Rochester map there. I I presume that that's going to be zoomable by a factor of fifty to try and get to the right uh spot in the, in the.
Yes, so you could definitely zoom in. Uh, we can zoom in as the representative, and then the um user the user can also zoom in also to pinpoint where the uh service request is needed to.
They can also put in the actual address, just type out the address.
Okay, because that, that's really.
This is really scaled down, but the the app, both the app and the online portals, um and we're happy with you as individuals to sit down and kind of show you this backend system or the system too, before we were to go live, for you just to become more familiar and comfortable with it too.
Just kind of looks like a really small map of South America. Uh, the the second question is, uh, I'm a person who uh really has conducted my life by telephone. And I like to, uh, that's not me, I don't like the telephone. Um, but that's the way I like to solve my problems. Am I more or less likely, or the same, to be able to talk to that snowplow supervisor uh to make sure that my cul-de-sac is uh done correctly?
I would say our hope is that we're making it easy, so you know that you can call the same number, really no matter what. Um that said, our system allows that you're not likely going to miss our teammate, who might be at lunch, who might be out addressing certain um needs at that moment in time, but that this really allows our system to ensure we know it got in there, it's going to get to that right person. And that you are more likely to get that response in a timely manner. Um one of the other things to highlight is there are different escalations, meaning um dependent on the need, it might be, hey, you see the certain if our teammate sees a certain escalation, they need to respond to that as quickly as possible. The other, you know, it's general rule of thumb with the anticipated amount of time, it might be, you know, a a business day or two plus for someone to get back. So, I mean, I really appreciate that for our community, you don't have to question, what step do I take next? What, did they get my message? Should I call back? Am I calling back too soon? Um and for our teammates, I think it's the piece of like, okay, I know somebody wanted to talk to me. Just having all the information available on both sides, I think will be really, really helpful. I mean, that said, this is a new system for our community, for our organization, so I don't think lost on any of us will be the ongoing piece of what's working well, what's not working well, where do we need to adjust. I think that's the other thing we've appreciated hearing from other communities. Um uh City Administrator Elms mentions a couple of communities she's been in who have had this. So the city of Evanston, Illinois, they're on their, they're, they've been having this um program for over, I think. So the city of Evanston, Illinois, they're on their, they've been having this program for over, I think, close to a decade. Right, there every iteration of theirs, they're learning something new. That's why we're also committed to learning from folks in the industry right out of the gate. But we also recognize we need that, you know, feedback loop within our organization, including with you as elected officials to fine-tune, you know, for sure within year one, but will likely still be up to that continuous improvement process year three, five plus.
And that will repeat a refrain that I have used before here. I have found staff responsiveness and timeliness to be terrific. I can only imagine this will improve it because the request will get sooner to the right person.
Consistent format too in receiving them.
And at one last, I should have highlighted this, but Kail had mentioned it in his remarks is that this is also that if that particular person is out on vacation, out sick, there's redundancy in this in this process too, where it's not just that one individual, but likely these this is these requests are going into an email, a collective email where multiple people are going to see the request as soon as it comes in. So if anything, I mean, we can't promise it, but it might actually increase the speed and efficiency at which things are addressed.
Councilmember Palmer?
Well, I'm excited for this. I wish it was starting in May. And so I've got a lot of questions and one of them is if I call three-one-one, are you somebody there to answer that phone twenty-four hours a day?
So our service will be Monday through Friday, eight to five at this point.
Well, I'd rather see it be twenty-four hours.
We need more money for that, but I would say that's why some of those other system parts of the system. So if you're thinking about it at three o'clock in the morning, you could go put in something in the chatbot or you could go put something in in the fill it out online. So you have the ability to do that and start the process twenty-four seven, just not verbally with an individual. But it would show that you have eight to five to be able.
And if it's an emergency, call nine-one-one.
Well, that's the next question is, is, is the, I'm assuming, when I've used three-one-one before, and I think it's a wonderful service for cities and for for us citizens. And so I call this number or I get the email, I'm assuming it says, you know, if this is an emergency, call nine-one-one. On the other side of that is we have the not emergency number. Do we do, are we going to have a note in there that says if this isn't really a police issue, go go three-one-one is?
Yes, and we've been having those conversations with those other departments too, like RPU, et cetera. So that we are, we are on the same page as the type of information and verbiage being shared on all of those different channels. So we haven't gotten it to the, you know, dot the i's, cross the t's kind of deal, but that's what we will keep moving through as we head towards implementation.
And one of the things I like a lot about this is that we get, I get complaints that I've talked to the department, I've left a message eight times. And then I send a note and of course I get a response and I would rather have them respond to the resident before they meet. And so this will track that so that so that when I call and I say, you know, this fire hydrant is is not working, that I would get, I would get a notification that yes, it's now working, not it's done. I'm going to get an explanation a little bit more than yes. Yes, okay. And then the next, the next thing is, is under Mr. Keen's question about a complaint. So if I call up and say there's a party or a barking dog, my understanding from my dealings is that complaints are private and I cannot find out who called that complaint in. And are you going to have that?
Thank you, Councilmember. And that's part of what we're working through. I want to say yes, it's just we're, what we're also being mindful of as we work with like our IT colleagues and and with like our with with catalysts is recognizing too, what is a very real reality in the environment with with bots and spam and ensuring we're not somehow bringing on a liability or an overflow or overwhelmed to the system in terms of what information we require, what information we don't require. So that's also a very timely conversation that we are having with the city attorney and others of exactly what we're asking as well as keeping privacy. And, you know, a level of anonymity where we also don't want folks feeling like, well, I would like to report this, but we I have a fear of it coming back, you know, and not wanting that either. So all of a very timely conversation and.
So on the flip side of that, if I have the homeowner that calls and complains that there's leaves on my neighbor's lawn that's flying into mine and they call every single day, at what point do you say, we we just can't respond?
Great question. And I would say I mentioned, you know, the associations that was, there's actually a, there was a policy conversation that was just going through that board on what policies do folks have in terms of how they handle certain types of calls or arguably abuse that comes on the phone in terms of their three-one-one teammates? So those are all the things when we talk about going through the steps to prep for implementation that we're out of the gate, very eyes wide open and prepared for what we likely will encounter.
So you said two things that are confusing to me. One of them, you said the the housing code would be handled by building and safety. But you said inspections at the beginning would be handled by three-one-one. Was that a misstatement?
Rental rental, rental inspection specifically would stay with community development. But as far as scheduling, scheduling, like building inspections would be handled by three-one-one.
And.
Is that answering?
I mean, to me, that's really confusing. And I know Leslie Sarah, and she's an extremely intelligent person, but it she's not going to be there all the time. And and all the rules, I mean, the plumbing inspector has a rule, the electrical inspector has a rule, all these different things come in. And I'm just, you know, we get a homeowner calling for that. I don't know why rental would be not with building and safety in 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 or I don't understand why the division.
So the rental inspections are typically on an annualized basis. So those happen, I know they don't come in like multiple times a day. They come in sort of at an annualized basis, but that's part of what they're working through at the different departments is to see. And anyone could call three-one-one and then end up getting into the queue through three-one-one to go to say the rental inspections team for them to then follow up. So won't always be follow-up from three-one-one. Probably rarely will be follow-up from three-one-one unless someone calls back three-one-one to check on their ticket. But three-one-one would be able to say, this is where it is, these are the notes that I can see. This is where we are. Do you want me to put any additional information? And it continues to log that.
So if I want a footing inspection tomorrow, do I call three-one-one or do I call building and safety?
Well, the building inspection, what we're doing is sending a ticket to the community, community development team and send that service ticket to them and they will go ahead and, you know, get the bike inspector to kind of like fulfill it at that point. And that's all we can do on our end because we're not the expert in community development. And we don't expect to be the expert of it. We are just the more the information taker and sending the request to community development where their experts are at at that point. So they will get that service request, they will follow through and it'll come back to us saying that it would either would follow through, need more information or it's on hold for certain reason or investigation or anything like that along that line. So.
So three-one-one will get them in the right place regardless of what the call is.
And Councilmember, if I might, I mean, what you're seeing is where we're at in this process. These are active conversations that we're having. So even some of what you're, what you're asking about, we are getting to the fine detail with departments on what the three-one-one team will take. Will we take that as a part of initial implementation? Are we taking that as a part of full implementation? Is that waiting until we're further and we've identified that we can handle the call volume that we have and is coming at a later date? So I I don't want it to sound like we don't know what we're talking about. We're also in like a very specific stage right now of vetting all of these fine details with departments and service areas. And I think again, that will come back to what's working, what's not, where do we, what do we need to continue to modify to best serve our community? So the team will, as you mentioned, Leslie, as well as others, will get trained in a cella and be able to make make those things happen. So it is not going to be a small fee, but is what we are committed to.
Okay, thank you.
Right, Councilmember Dennis, final very brief comment, then we'll move on.
Okay, just for my understanding or my clarification, I believe study sessions are for councils to understand a topic. But if that is not correct, then please correct me because city council official meetings that are the first and third, we want to learn about what we are voting on. And so I apologize if we have very brief times, I will bring a lot of questions to the council meetings. But this, my question for this specific, and again, I like would like to be clarified if study sessions are not for understanding.
Just go ahead and ask the question, Councilmember Dennis.
Okay, thank you. My question is, I was going to chime off of what Councilmember Palmer was mentioning. But I first want to say, I think this process is wonderful to try to simplify the complex world we live in. But it is a complex world. So there is questions that kind of fall under so many different dynamics. And if we are only doing three-one-one between eight to five or eight to four, whatever the the timeframe is, I think that's a huge problematic situation. Not everyone works, they work very many different hours. And some people aren't allowed to use phones. I know from my teaching experience and other people, that, you know, there's no way they can call between different, you know, eight to five kind of timeframes. Also, if it is confusing or a situation, you know, nine-one-one, eight-nine-nine, which is a suicide prevention, two-one-one, which is a county, there's a lot of different numbers that start getting in people's heads, right? Like, oh, my goodness, okay, I have a question, do I do two-one-one or three-one-one or do I? I mean, sorry, maybe two-one-one is the United Way. Okay, I'm confused even. Okay, so you have all these numbers. Then you have a situation where maybe a storm happens after five PM, which you know occasionally does. Or something happens beyond the eight to five where they will, we really need to, you know, do this now because I can't call between eight to five. I'm just worried a little bit about the confines of that eight to five timeframe because life happens outside of eight to five and a lot of essential workers and people do not have access to calling between eight and five. So how does, how is that going to be addressed for those who are needing government services? And let's say maybe, you know, we'll forget or have a lot of challenges, paycheck to paycheck, a lot of situations where they need to call right then and it's after eight to five, what happens to their complaint?
Councilmember Dennis, as was provided earlier in this meeting, there are a number of ways that people can reach three-one-one. Also, if it's an emergency to them, they can always call nine-one-one after hours. But today, we are not staffed after five o'clock. So really, we're providing a lot more options for people to reach out and be able to have their questions answered. Also, many of the things that they're reaching out for, we don't have staff to go out after five. Those are things that we would end up scheduling, doing those things. So we actually will have many different ways for people to reach us, many more ways for people to reach us after five and on the weekends. It's just that the specific phone line at this time would not be staffed. And it's very rare across the country, if at all, that it's staffed twenty-four seven. That's that's for emergencies. So I think that will end the comments related to your question. I think we should move on to the next item.
There, no, that did not end my comment. I have follow-up.
You don't have the floor anymore. So let's move on. We have a great presentation. I know I had from our fire department, but thank you again for being here tonight.
Thank you.
And the team's been doing a great job on this. So thanks all for being here. So while they're coming forward, I think unless Chief Kurska is introducing this item, we do have Chief Kurska and Assistant Chiefs Feiny and Ferguson here to talk.
Fine.
Fine.
Fine and Ferguson.
President Carlson, I believe this might go longer than twenty-five minutes. Could we take a break right now?
Sure.
Thank you.
It can take five minutes.
Recording in progress.
All right, well, we've had a presentation on this about maybe a year ago or eight months or so, but looking forward to some updates and more detail. So welcome to our team.
All right, thank you, President Carlson. Good afternoon, City Councilmembers, City Administrator Zelm's, Chris Ferguson with Rochester Fire Department, one of the assistant chiefs, the other assistant chief, Caleb Vine, standing next to me. And like President Carlson indicated, about about a year ago in April, we had a presentation over our strategic plan. And in the meantime, we've done some more work and some more kind of analysis. So this kind of serves as a as an update to that presentation. So just briefly, just want to start off real quick, kind of looking back at twenty-three. No different than a lot of other years, we remain very busy, not only just providing emergency services, but also continue to look for areas that we can improve, both within the department and outside. So many things that we do overlap in so many different areas that we really need to to continue to look for ways to improve. Some of this could be our professional development that that we do for our supervisors. Um, some of this could be our professional development that uh, that we do for our supervisors. Um, the department has several sub work groups that also look at various topics uh related to the department and our operations. One of those being our apparatus group, they continue to kind of stay on the cutting end edge of trends such as like electric apparatus, um, providing uh their input on our decisions on uh future fleets. Um, one of the big things that we've done is partner with our dispatch and our partners at Mayo Clinic to look at the way uh we've been dispatched to emergency medical incidents um and trying to find some refinements there. So Rochester Fire is not always being uh dispatched, at least um initially, um, if we're not needed. Um, so that's one area that we continue to look at going forward of uh an area that we feel is vital for um investment in the dispatch arena. So um, that could include some things like um looking at, you know, some other best practices, um additional training and other things that could help improve um at least that area uh there. So real quick, um, everyone likes a little bit of numbers. So this is a breakdown of our calls for service, uh, reference twenty twenty two is on the right hand side. Um, so kind of the, the, the Cliff Notes version here is really, uh, we saw just a slight decrease in twenty three's numbers over twenty two's. Um, and that is still somewhat significant because the year twenty twenty two was actually record setting in, in quite a few different categories. So we're really not coming um that much off of those uh, those records. Uh, one of the big things to point out is our Fire Marshals Division, which is a team of five, um, saw a fifteen percent increase in permitting um year, year over year. Um, so that's been challenging for them just to kind of keep up with our current level of new construction demand. Um, and if you think about it, each one of those permits is equivalent to at least one form of inspection, if not uh many different um follow on inspections. So it really does kind of add that workload, um, while they're still in charge of kind of our public education and our fire investigation team as well. So they've been, they've been working pretty hard. One big thing is, you know, calls for service can be looked at a couple of different ways. One, it can just kind of be that historical record, right, of, of how many times have we done X or responded to Y. Um, but we really started looking at it through the lens of um more, so this is what the community is asking of us, or this is their demand that they're placing on our services, what we need to be prepared uh to answer. And so again, really looking at this, you know, the big standout there is, is that other response, or excuse me, the uh, the rescue and the EMS response, um, which is uh categorically led the way in terms of both uh how fast it's grown and kind of that, that lion's share of our call volume, so. In that uh strategic plan update that we gave last April, we kind of identified the three big challenges that we foresaw, uh geographic coverage of our city, the increasing call volume, and then some diversity um and inclusion and belonging pieces with, with our department. And really twenty three taught us that, that we were on track for those, and we kind of continue uh to believe that those are still going to be those big three areas um going, going farther um into the future here. So with, with that, the geographic um coverage of the city still can, kind of continues to be a challenge just at the rate that we expand. Most of the city is actually falling under the ISO two category, which is, which is great. It's a, a good benchmark standard. Um, but with that, we are still experiencing um some areas of the city uh that are still looking at seven, sometimes almost closer to eight minute response times, uh kind of on the fringes. And this demographic, or this graphic here kind of helps illustrate that a little bit. Uh, some of those hatched or X areas um can indicate up to uh seven minute or longer um response time. Diversity and belonging has again also remained one of our top priorities. Um, the department sees the value and understands the value and, and trying to have a department makeup that's representative of the community that we re uh, we serve. And so um, that coupled with some of the, the recent uh demographic changes that have been projected at the state level, um, it's kind of also served as a reminder that um our historic recruitment and kind of um a pool that typically we see apply for these type of positions is going to be changing. Um, and so we really need to work on kind of casting that wider net and bringing in uh more folks with kind of diverse experiences and diverse backgrounds um into um the department. Uh, we understand that that's kind of going to be an iterative process. There's going to be some trial and error, find things that work and, and some that don't and get those replaced. Um, and so with that, I'd like to just pass the mic over, uh, so to speak, to Assistant Chief Fine to kind of talk about some of those um implementation things that we've done thus far um in twenty three.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So is Chief Ferguson. You're right, this is loose. Um, Chief Ferguson already alluded to, but our proximity dispatching, making sure that uh the closest units being called to that call for service, making sure EMS algorithm, we're sending the right people, uh, we're adding value to those calls. We're doing everything that we can uh within our power to really streamline that. The bottom right corner, elimination of some of the certifications. Um, historically, we always had certifications firefighter one, firefighter two, uh, and E M T being the biggest ones. Um, in listening sessions, we've learned that those are barriers. Um, we want to break those down. So now with our upcoming process, they're gone. We're going to allow everybody to compete in the process um without having those, and then they can get them afterwards. So it should be, in theory, easier. Um, the next slide. We know that the challenges ahead um are known yet unknown. We don't know exactly how big this is going to get, but again, we know it's going to be big. It's vague. We know we have challenges we have to keep up with. We're going to need some help. We just don't know how that looks quite yet. This eight step process up here, you can see two of them are already complete. The other six, um, while we plan, we want to be strategic, we want to be uh good stewards of our budget. We don't know what order this needs to go in. Uh, we know that these have to be completed uh to complete our mission, but again, based on what the future throws at us, we just don't know what direction. So thankfully, uh, with your support, continued support, um, we want to continue down this path that we started, and we believe um that we can address all three of the issues that we face. Thank you. We'll open it up for some questions.
Hi. You know, I'm a fan of this. I really love the direction you're going, really thinking smartly about resources and how to better respond to our community as it continues to grow and change and it's exciting time. So thank you for the update, Councilmember Palmer.
Got a couple of questions for you. Could you put the map back up?
Sure.
If, if I remember correctly, weren't we at a um level three? Now we're at two?
That's correct. We, we just had an ISO survey uh last July, I believe.
And, and that saves people on their insurance money, especially commercial? Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. Uh, mainly, mainly commercial is what ties to ISO. There are some home insurance companies that do use it, but not all of them.
But that's a huge deal.
But that's a big deal for our department and our city. I don't know the exact dollar amounts off the top.
No, but it's a huge deal for us to go from a three to a two. I mean, it's not, that, that's a lot of work and a lot of investment that we've done.
Correct.
Mike, hearing, is that doing that right? So I'm looking at the map, and, and the city of Rochester is outlined in blue. Is that correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Now there's blue to the left and blue to, to the north of the, what I consider the city. What is that?
Uh, those, I believe, are going to be some of our other um, kind of our other um related uh cities. But to kind of get to your point, yeah, that, that main center outline is going to be just the city limits of Rochester.
And would, would I be, my guess, looking at it is about ninety eight percent of it is in the dark green, which is a two?
Correct.
And then the red isn't in the city, isn't that correct?
There is, there is some red kind of on the borders of some of the areas of the city. Um, that would be that ISO ten.
Just at the very.
Correct.
Southwest and very southeast.
Correct.
Just barely.
Okay.
Um, Hubert, I, I do think it's important to, to point out, this is ISO as it relates to response time, and there are many factors that go into our ISO rating, including factors that have nothing to do with the fire department, like our roadway system, how quickly we deliver water, how closely related we are to being able to distribute water differently in our water system, um, training for fire, a lot of different things go into the ISO rating. Of course, the fire department is very critical to that. However, ISO rating is not just influenced by response time.
Right, it demonstrates that we have strong infrastructure, infrastructure in place overall.
And that response time.
I guess, the, the, I guess what I'm trying to say is that we should be proud of it. That's all I'm trying to say. I'm not trying to point a finger, say that the city administrator is not doing her job. I'm saying.
To keep taking a look at the response time.
Correct. It's kind of a, it's kind of a double edged thing at that. Yep, okay. Thank you.
Other comments? Councilmember Keane?
Yeah, again, so good to get the update on this. I know there's a lot of work going on behind this to get us this point. I'm, I'm a little bummed that some of the, the eight steps, it ties towards that idea of creating the leadership and bringing the systems in, because underneath that, there's a lot of other work going on. Um, but I guess I want to make a statement here and see if you'd say we're doing this right. I think, I think what I see the end game of this strategic direction, if we continue to support it and if the right people are voting on this as the years go by, um, what we're trying to do is staff an additional fire depart, an additional, a new northwest station with an, with the existing fire, fire team, and then staff uh an emergency response team to, so that we better match the call volume that we're getting.
You're absolutely correct. That's, that's kind of the whole driving force behind this is to try and be strategic with, you know, can we make uh a smaller investment upfront that would free up some of our more um costly apparatus such as the, the fire engine there? And if, uh, you know, this is obviously conditions based, so if we can get that call volume relief um from downtown, that would theoretically free up that, that engine, that second engine downtown to relocate.
So sometimes when I look at those eight steps, I see all this hiring and all this leadership and I cringe, but underneath it, what I'm really supporting is that plan to be able to staff our new fire station and basically change our mix to be more responsive to the world we now live in.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
I would just add one thing, Councilmember Keane. There's a third thing, and that is a, a hiring pool, a recruitment pipeline.
You know, excellent point, Chief, thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Dennis.
All right, I just have to rave on how wonderful I just, I hear great things about your department, and thank you. I know you've come specifically to people in uh my neighborhood and all over to help answer questions, uh, even like, what do we burn for our backyard? Or the um situation that happened today with Elton Hill, I mean, Elton Hills, uh, A C C Heights, the controlled burn and getting information now, so people weren't scared about the, the smoke that they were, they were experiencing. So I appreciate the extra energy and time for all of that. I feel this is a mammoth proposal, and there's so many numbers and information in this. So um, I was just a second ago talking with the city administrator, and just from my understanding, I will meet probably uh sometime in the near future with, from someone from your department to answer all these questions that I have received and I have on some of this proposal. So I won't use up time in this very packed agenda tonight for that, but I just wanted to say thank you for all the work you've done, and I, I just feel like we need more people uh who serve like you and your department does. So thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time today. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks, I just want to point out how, what a nice job they did of um embedding this into the city council's strategic priorities and showing how it nestles into that. So thanks for doing that. Um, so the next item is um the Silver Lake Phase One, and I believe that Mr. Whitman and Mr. Nigbor are going to be coming forward to present the Silver Lake Master Plan Phase One.
All right, good afternoon. Uh, thank you, President Carlson and council members for allowing us to uh present the Phase One improvements of the Silver Lake Master Plan. And I would just like to start out by uh, uh, letting you know, there's a, a lot of work throughout the community that's gone into this plan. Like to start out by just uh sharing some minor milestones and uh of approvals and progresses as we've uh made it through, that, that brought us here today. Uh, going back to the park system plan and that was approved and adopted in two thousand sixteen, huge milestone for our department. At that time, the department had been in existence for a hundred and twelve years. Uh, we could not find in records anywhere uh where, where there had been a, a, a system wide plan, and they're, not to say there was not a lot of great planning activity in parks and recreation, but nothing that looked at the department uh and the city holistically in regards to parks and recreation, facilities, programs, and amenities. The referendum funding that was passed in twenty twenty, just want to pause there. There were a lot of uh significant events that we'd much rather forget that happened in twenty twenty. Twenty twenty was a great year for parks and recreation. As you recall, that uh being outdoors was one of the first things that was approved and actually recommended during the pandemic. And it made people, it got people outside, and there were a lot of people that became aware of their neighborhood park or became aware of trails and, and other activities that they'd uh maybe didn't appreciate as much. And so that was uh what we thought might be a very uh difficult year to pass the referendum turned out to be a great year, and uh, and we still are very excited about that, and we're here today because of that referendum. We're here today uh in this planning process, not just uh, uh, that's not a general statement. I just had to clarify. All right, uh, we did some planning and prioritizing for the uh, uh, the referendum dollars, and that took place in, in twenty twenty one. Uh, with the help of city administration, came up with the advanced construction plan that uh we presented and approved in uh January twenty twenty two. Both the Silver Lake and uh Soldier Field Park Master Plans were approved by the Park Board in October of twenty twenty two. We came back uh with Silver Lake Plan uh in January twenty three for some uh fine tuning refinement, and just last week, uh presented the final design to the Park Board. The uh Park Board supports this plan. I just want to back up a little bit and talk a little bit about the community engagement that uh went into this process. Uh, this was uh very extensive throughout the planning process, uh led uh by the consultant team, but also uh our communication engagement team was involved as well as uh Chow, our D, D E I director. And so um, it was probably the um strongest engagement activity that we've been involved in on the two master plans that you're well aware of, uh Silver Lake Park and Soldier's Field. Uh, there are challenges to meet the demands of the community. Uh, I'd like to say this plan makes everyone happy. Uh, I'd like to say that every park plan that we do uh accomplishes that. We work to meet the demands of user groups and the community at large. And there's also other challenges of uh finding the space and uh working, working within a budget uh to uh, to move a plan forward. As I said, the board, uh Park Board supports the plan. However, I just wanted to point out throughout our discussions with the Park Board, they recognize demands that go beyond what we're presenting today, specifically aquatics. Every time we talk about uh Silver Lake Park, we talk about the Silver Lake Pool, and uh whether or not uh there should be two pools at this, at point in Rochester. We have community engagement that does support that. However, uh, we have uh stayed true to our park system plan and uh, and worked within our budget, and this is the plan that we feel is uh, that meets all those requirements. It's uh, it, it is, and it brings a lot of exciting amenities to Silver Lake Park and to the community. Uh, the board has recommended to advance the Phase One projects and to address the need for a second pool through a more extensive and thorough planning process. Uh, the board adopted a resolution outlining recommendations to address the need for more aquatics facilities in Rochester, and that was included in your packet today. What we'd like to do from here is to walk through the uh Phase One, uh Silver Lake Phase One improvements and uh share that with you. We realize there's going to be questions and feedback and uh related to uh the plan, also related to uh community, commu, uh, commu, communication you received, and we'd like to, to be able to address that uh at the end of the presentation.
Okay, so hold questions till the end?
We, we think that'd be wise, just because we, the plan may got, may uh get lost somewhere in that, in that discussion. We'd like to present that, so you'll have an idea of uh changes and updates and uh be able to provide feedback on the plan directly.
Okay, sounds good.
And I'll turn the time over to Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. Um, I do want to acknowledge uh the skate park group that's here tonight, too, and I'm not sure the swim club is here, but this has been developed from a partnership of engagement across the system. In fact, Paul talked about that as part of the park system plan and the master planning effort. So again, well, through participation, whether it's for support, encouragement, design changes, this is all good feedback that we hear and are taking this in, into our consideration for these final plans. This is a master plan uh that we laid out in uh October of twenty twenty two, refined in twenty twenty three. And the first phase talks about a six million dollar project. This is construction dollar budget and design fees and contingencies, those are on top of those numbers, so it's about a seven million dollar project. Current funding that we have available for this project is four million dollars. We're like going into it, so we had to go back and refine it what our program was going to be in this design process. Um, I'm going to bring Andy Mastropole from W S B up here, and he's going to talk about the design. I'm going to bring Andy Mastropal from WSB up here and he's going to talk about the design details as we go into planning. So what we're, this is a, is a 60% to 90% plan set right now that we're refined. By next week, we'll have a 90% plan set fairly well refined. So again, these details, we're coming forward very strong, very fast. That's the, the goal of what we're doing here today to get under construction for this year. So, Andy?
Hello? Mike only got half the memo on the blue blazer plaid shirt attire, but we're gonna let it go. Yeah, I just want to talk in more detail about this phase, these phase one improvements. Up, up on your screen here is just the existing areas for the splash, the splash pad right now and the, and the aquatics. Everybody's probably familiar with it. So this is just a page out of the master plan. So yeah, the master plan was just adopted, I think officially in January of 2023. So it's, this is exciting to be able to move on this so quickly. So we definitely were using the master plan as a guide. I do want to say that in your packet, this is the same plan that was in your packet, except that the labels were inadvertently left off. So we wanted to somewhere along in that transition of the information, the labels were removed. So I wanted to note that. So this is an enlargement of one of the area, two, two of the phase improvements, which would be the, the aquatics or the splash pad and then the full court basketball court and the skate park. So just for circulation purposes, what we're looking to do is, is create an accessible route that so that meandering path is a, is basically an ADA compliant or less than 5% sidewalk that goes up to the splash pad. Now, it is important to note that this, there would be no fence at all on this splash pad, similar to Lincolnshire and the other ones that are going in. So people would not have to access the, this, the bath house in order to get to the splash pad. So looking at the circulation, the existing circulation would stay that the, sort of that gray area, the sidewalk is going to remain in place. That's steeper than, than 5%. So that's not ADA compliant, but people could use that as an access and that will be accessed by trucks that would deliver chemicals to the west side of the building. This layout also shows a potential pool. That footprint is an eight lane, 25 yard pool with associated deck around it. So we wanted to make sure if that was the direction that the community decided to go either now or in the future, that a pool could be accommodated in this layout. Also showing the full court basketball court, which was, which was suggested in the master plan and then the skate park improvements. In addition to a shelter too, that would serve both the basketball court and the skate park. I'm going to talk a little bit about the skate park right now. So these are images from the master plan. So there would be improvements to the existing skate park. And in addition to a smaller or larger flow bowl and a smaller amoeba bowl. So there was a lot of public engagement that occurred and continues, continues to occur with the representation of the skate park community. And we were happy to see them here today and even some young future leaders as well back there. So this is the current layout. Let me just see what's in front of me here. Okay. Let me back up. Okay. All right. So this is the most current layout. We've, we've met with the group a couple of times and we're still working through the design. We do have a, a sub consultant, California Skate Parks, who are national experts in design and construction of skate parks. So they have been actively engaged in this. We did do an online survey around December, January, where there were close to 500 responses to that. So we were very encouraged by the responses and the purpose of that really was to just not, not to design the skate park, which is already done during the master plan process, but to design the details. There's lots of details that worked out because all we have are precedent images and this plan view. So, so we're, we're continuing to work through refining this layout. Make sure that it flows properly, that we can get the most, many features that we can for the budget that we have. The budget right now, with the current budget is $350,000 for the first phase of the skate park. And we feel that, that the, the large blow bowl is what could be done for the $350,000. But we're approaching this and designing it such so that, that if grants are applied for and received, we could just continue on and continue either now or in the near future as grants come in to expand, you know, do the, do the second bowl, do the improvements to the existing skate park. So this is just a very preliminary graphic, looking at how it could be broken up into different phases depending on the budget. Back to the same plan we just looked at, I'm going to focus a little bit now on the splash pad. So the splash pad is, it is a recirculating system, not a, not a flow through. So I just wanted to point that out. It would be, you know, there would be medium broom concrete finish. I've got some better images. We have two different areas to the splash pad that the upper airhead is for smaller two to five year olds. I'm not going to go into all the, the features, but you know, there's a little bit more space there. There's a good variety of things. And the, the larger areas for older kids, six and older, six to 12 or however old. You know, some bigger, more focal point features there and it's connected by some, some basalt rocks that would, could act as, as seating. These are just some of the more photos of, of the features that would be included into the design. And some perspective view of what it could look like. One thing we did hear from our community engagement is the need for shade. So this is looking northwest with the, with the bath house in the back there. So what we did here is a need for shade. There is a picnic area that we have that we know we can put some umbrellas around those tables, above those tables. But we're working with the city right now and trying to incorporate shade either as part of our base bid or as an ad alternate so that we know what the cost would be to get that shade in there. And Mike is suggesting this, this was the same issue that Soldier's Field was dealing with. So we may just use the same solution for shade that Soldier's Field used. Another view or a ground, eye level view looking southwest. You can see, you know, the blocks that we talked about and other, other options, you know, other options. There's rentable cabanas are also part of the master plan that would offer shade. So there's other options for, there's some options for shade that we're definitely exploring. This is looking from the, like the bath house looking out. You can see the picnic area that would be associated with this. So yeah, medium broom finished concrete, you know, just basics with non-slip surface. Looking at the building itself now, I apologize, but I flipped the orientation of the building. So the splash pad is on the top of the page now and, and then down below is the front of the building and then the north is down below. So the improvements that we're looking at doing are in the, in the southeast corner, putting two single occupancy restrooms, more of a family style. They'd be lockable, single toilet and sink in each one. And then there'd be two more addition to that, to the, to the northeast. So it'd be a total of four. What we heard also through our public engagement was need for an outdoor shower. So we're including an outdoor shower on that south wall. And then also the state requirements to upgrade the drinking fountain. On the west side of the building would be the mechanical equipment. So there'd be mechanical equipment on the, on the, on the south. So the idea that that's visible. So when someone's working on the equipment, they can turn around, see the, the splash pad and be able to work on it and easier. And then the, on the north part would be the chemical storage rooms. So and there'd be two of those. Now it'd be accessible. I think we'd have liquid chemicals. So it'd be accessible from the sidewalk in front and along to the west. The remainder of the building would be, would remain undeveloped. We've, we've laid this out. There is some interest from the adaptive reuse, reuse or adaptive rec department, I'm sorry, to potentially use the middle part of that building, but right now it's going to remain unchanged. The design of this was such so that it could, if, if a pool was put here, it could be repurposed again as, as a bath house. And then if a pool would, would also occur, we'd probably add on a mechanical room on the, on the west side of this building. Moving along, we'll talk about this west playground area. So Silver Lake Station is at the bottom of the page here with the existing West Shelter Building. So mash plan called for an upgrade of this playground. And so this, this is the current site plan. We're proposing three different areas, one for the large area for, for older six to 12 age, age group. The area B would be the smaller, smaller, more tot lot for two to five year olds. And then C would be a climbing structure. So we, keeping the existing kiosk accessible route would be from the parking lot into that curve linear. The kayak rental would stay and everything else stays. The regional trail stays. We're not changing that. We're just providing better connectivity to the existing pavilion. There would be a future dog park. That's not a part of this phase. That's at the top of the page. And then also some, we're, are showing a small rain guard to handle this stormwater management. Again, the orientation moved on this turned again a little bit here, but the improvements to the west shelter would be fairly minimal. The large area is just more of an event area. And then we're going to just upgrade the, the restrooms to meet current ADA standards. So here are just some imagery of looking at it from, as you enter from the parking lot would keep the existing kiosk and you can see how the, how the the, the, the path meanders into it. There would be a fence, a low fence that would surround the outside of the sidewalk here in the playground. Maybe it's a 30 inches or, or so, but to keep the geese out. We looked at other options and there might be other options, but it's, it's, it's important that we keep the geese out here. So these are just some, I won't go into detail, but this is the larger kid's structure with a large slide. I think that's 22 feet high. Accessible by a, a climbing net. And this is the climbing structure itself here with different, there will be, we'll use poured in place rubber, not entirely through this, but at least to access some of the components. And then it'll probably be a bark mulch or rubber rice mulch material over the rest of it. Is it for the younger kids, you know, and I'm going to shade there and roll plane. The final area that we looked at was, was called the confluence area. And in the master plan, it talked about creating an indigenous gathering area. So we hired as a sub consultants, full circle planning and design out of the metro area. And they've been just wonderful to work with. That's what they do. Sam is a architect. And we've had, we, we looked at it at the top side. We looked at it. We knew we had a limited budget for this area. It's a hundred thousand dollars, but I, I told Sam, let's look at this from a master plan standpoint. What could we do there if other funding became available? And so he created two, two circles, a larger gathering area and a more intimate gathering area. And so this is the master plan right here. We involved grads, greater Rochester area Dakota supporters. And there's been three public meetings so far with them and another one I just got notice of on the 19th. So they've been actively involved in this, this design and, and they've been great to work with. One of the things in the master plan talked about, as you know, it's heavily rip wrapped out there and trying to create a more natural setting as you get out near the point. And one of the suggestions here is to add some decorative boulders and vegetation to on top of the existing rip rap, which we're not quite sure the feasibility of that. We'll have to work with the Army Corps of Engineers and DNR to, to see that. But that's kind of a future, future phase. And so I'll show you what, in terms of the immediate phase, what we're looking to do is create this circle in stone as a, as a gathering area, the larger circle, a lot for larger events. And then the inner circle would be for storytelling or a portable fire pit. We do have a trail, an accessible trail, probably like a gravel or grant ship pay, path that would go to it, come in from the east and some, some native landscaping. Try to keep it very simple. The four colors represent the four tribes that were Dakota tribes that were in the area as well as the, the directions north, south and west. So this is an image of, of, of what we're working with. And again, we're very cognizant of, of the maintenance that would go into this and just want to make it someplace that people can, the public can feel comfortable using as well. With that, I'm going to hand it back over to Mike.
Thank you, Andy. So again, the, the whole process here was a, not just a master plan, but refining this to a design process. The next steps you see going forward here, we met with the park board last Thursday. We got their kind of tentative blessing to move forward. We're coming to you today to explain where we're, where we're at right now. Next Monday, we want to come back before you again. Get that authorization to final design and bid the project and move forward that way. We anticipate then going out for bids at, in April, some point in time. We're going to go for grants in the end of March and those grants are going to be for the skate park and for the playground areas. So those are the two components. We think we got a good shot at getting grant funding for. And then from once that point goes forward, then go out for construction activities in the final bidding. So the project right now, like I mentioned earlier on, is a $4 million current budget. That's what we have allocated in the advanced constructor referendum. We lead its grant potentials out there between $350,000 and 1.6 million. So we're going to pursue the entirety of that, of those grant dollars if we should, can sure get those. Aquatics right now is about 1.5 million. That's the budget we've allocated for that. That's the splash pad and improvements to the bath house, et cetera, the access point into it as well. Skate park, we have allocated $350,000, but we, again, we could think that we can get some additional funding through grants. At least doubling that amount to $700,000 and working with the city of skate, who is a, a big advocate for skating across the state of Minnesota. They want to take our entire project and put that forward to the legislature for that approval. So again, we'll see if we get that pushed forward that way. And again, they've been very encouraging for that activity. The West Shelter Playground Area, the budget right now is 900,000 with a $500,000 without grants. And again, the idea being we get additional grant funding. We could do more with that money. Again, if we don't get it, we'll scale that back to be within budget. And the confluence area again, Andy just talked about the master planning was about $350,000. And if we don't get that, we have a hundred thousand dollars to put towards that first circle area. Again, as you can see, we're, we're trying to stretch those dollars as far as we can based on the master planning efforts and engage the community as far as we can go. But in reality, we're, we're stuck with the budget we end up with. So whether it's $4 million or, you know, five and a half or $6 million, we'll take whatever we can get to make that budget work. So other questions have come up. Paul mentioned that at the very onset, pool or no pool? We walked through the path of the master plan, the park system plan, the current master planning for this particular park, the budgeting that process that we went forward with. There's been no pool planned here at that point in time. Now you folks have that ability to make that change if you so desire, but that's the funding we have currently does not include a pool. Trail sizes came up in our, in our conversations previously as well, along with the park board. We're not building any trails as part of this. We're providing access points into the confluence area, access into the, the playground area, access points into the skate park. There's really no additional trails being developed within those access points. With that, I think that is all we have. So any questions you have for us, we'd be happy to answer those.
Councilmember Palmer is going to very graciously kick us off.
Well, I've been told to be nice. It's been, I'll do my best. I, I, I'm not a fan of, of moving this forward right away. I, I, I don't see us doing this next Monday, but I'll just say that right now. We need Silver Lake Pool open for the summer of 2024. Otherwise we have no room for 400 kids who need to have swim lessons. Why, I, I mean, we could end up with no pool open this year.
The goal from almost the onset when we started the master planning for Soldier's Field and Silver Lake was that we stage our pool openings. So again, we'd always have at least one pool open. We had Silver Lake open last year while Soldier's Field was under construction. But opening Soldier's Field up this year, closing down Silver Lake, that's been the ideal plan from day one. Now the whole conversation around, is there adequate space in pools for swimming lessons and things like that? Our teams have been working, coordinating with the swim club and, and the swim clubs and coordinating with the school district about getting more activities for swimming lessons going on. There is going to be swimming. There is going to be swimming lessons at Silver, uh, Soldier's Field Pool. That capacity at Soldier's Field is, is dramatically expanding over that what was there initially on. So again, we're trying to meet the capacities best we can, but it won't solve all the issues we've got.
First of all, I'm not sure that it, you're going to open June first at Soldier's Field. You can't guarantee that. So you, we could end up with no pools. We have a storm sewer at the, at the west side of the golf course. It's supposed to have been done in November. And now I'm being told it won't be done until May. So it doesn't take much for parts at Soldier's Field, unless it's completed today and we can fill it full of water. But I don't think it is. Is it?
So I can't guarantee you a hundred percent that'll be, be done by June, but that's been the goal from day one. When we started construction, uh, working with our consultants and our contractors, it said every week in our meetings with them that that is the date we're opening.
And what I hear from, what I hear from the aquatics people is that we don't have enough room at Soldier's Field to teach swimming. But we need the twenty-five yard pool, eight, eight, eight lanes. And I agree with that, but I go back a little bit differently and because I watched this presentation at, um, a park board meeting. And there's some stuff that, that was, I kind of glossed over today. Over in the Confluence area, um, you know, you wanted to do color concrete. The path needs to be a hard surface, not stone. You didn't want to do an ADA accessible route, but we'd need an ADA accessible route to that area. I think it's a great addition to the park. Is, is this for a religious ceremonies or is this just for a gathering spot for, for everybody in Rochester?
For the community, not just for any one group, but.
And so I could see you starting that this spring and, and I, and I fully support that. What I, I'm baffled at is, is in nineteen sixty, we had forty thousand people living in Rochester. That's a thirty-six percent increase from nineteen forty, um, or from nineteen fifty. I, I don't understand why we'd want to go down to one pool. And so I guess what I'm looking at, and I'd like to see you come back with a plan that reflects this would be is, is to remove that building in that hill and make it street level. That way we can get a, a good pool splash pad. We can actually get a skating park that's not, uh, an old, um, tennis court. And, and I support the, the skate park also being there. But, but you know, I, I had to laugh, um, when you had a fence around the playground, but you're not going to put a fence around the waiting pool. Or the, the splash pad when you have geese in the area. Um, that seems a little bit wrong to me. I don't, I don't think that the, the basketball court's necessary. And the reason I say that is that MLK is a, a nice facility and that's around the corner. I'd rather see us make it even nicer. We have Jefferson School for, for basketball. And I know that when we did the, the planning, the consultant said, you know, no one asked for it, but we, we just thought we should put one in. You know, those, those are, you know, I'm going to go back. We need to have a pool open this summer. Silver Lake Pool needs to be open for swim lessons and other things. I think that we need to get rid of that old building. You're not using it very much. It's sixty-five years old. But I think we took that hill out and made it one level. Is there a difficulty with that?
Just money. You're spending money on taking a hill down. The second issue you have is when you lower it too far, it is flood plain in that location. So again.
Well, but Three Links Park is, has got a, a bathroom there. Is that in the flood plain?
That is on the edge of the flood plain. So again, depending on what the elevation you're at, just to the west of the skate park is flood plain.
Okay. But, but we could have a better skate park and a better pool. And so I'd like to see that pool stay open. I'd like to see that hill come down for a couple of reasons. And one of them is for security. The other one is the ADA accommodation during a winding road, um, to going to a splash pad without a fence. People are going to be walking through goose debris and they're going to be, end up going through grass that it's going to be in that, that splash pad, which you don't want. I'm assuming. Um, and as far as funding goes, I'm glad you brought that up. We do have money left over from the twenty-twelve sales tax extension and we also can bond for this. It would not take much money to bond for this pool and one out to McQuillan Field. So the southeast has a pool. My rough numbers would be about five hundred thousand dollars in payment over ten years to bond. We have bonding facility to do that. And I don't know how much is left in our twenty-twelve sales tax extension. Do you know how much is left?
I would have needed to have that question ahead of time in order to be able to answer it with a very specific answer. But I believe if you're referencing the downtown sales tax dollars, is that what you're referencing? What part of the sales tax? Because that had some.
The twenty-twelve sales tax dollars.
Right. But what specific project from the twenty-twelve sales tax?
Whichever one has money in it.
But they have to align with the use. So, I mean, we had talked about, when we had talked about other projects that were coming forward. The availability of downtown related twenty-twelve sales tax and I don't recall what that number was at the time.
Mayor, President of the Council, we, we could get you a specific information, but generally most of that's been allocated. You recall, uh, back in January, you did a CIP amendment for three projects. A lot of the downtown and residual sales tax from the twenty-twelve, twenty thirteen sales tax was allocated, to the North Broadway Park and Ride and the Downtown Building Energy Transition and, um, and related projects. So we had that, um, we did subsequently get a grant, um, for additional funding for the North Broadway Park and Ride. Kind of the federal I A J matching funding that the state approved at about one point eight million. So we could evaluate some of those things. Of course, with debt service, you have to have a mechanism to repay that. Uh, we don't have any, uh, any additional debt service for pools programmed into the current models, but that's a budgetary type of conversation for you all though.
So what you, what you basically just said, Mr. Parrish, is a one point eight million dollars that we could use, um, for this project. Grabbed from the, from the parking ramp.
If the common council decided that that was something that they wanted to do as a majority.
Well, I understand it takes four votes. This is not my first.
And didn't want to allocate it to something else. I mean, we haven't had, I hadn't heard that conversation come up until today. So I haven't had any direction to do any of those things, but it's something that if the council wanted us to pursue that, although this is the design that has come forward with the community.
Well, let's take this one step at a time. How many people here would like to have the pool open this year?
You also don't have funding for that. So that would require operating funds. So you would need to bring that.
There's four votes.
We also don't vote in this meeting, but I'm understanding that you would like us to come back with a cost for, which I think might be significant.
Which do you want? Do, do you, do you want to have four?
I'd like to have a functional meeting where we talk about whether or not you have funding in your budget and you can't vote at this meeting. But you have representatives here that could talk about the cost and the ability to open Silver Lake. Because it's March and typically they would be planning that starting in February.
If you do have that readily available, I know last year it was what, ninety thousand dollars or a hundred and twenty or something?
Because, uh, uh, thank you, President Carlson, uh, because of just the, um, what, new maintenance issues we're dealing with, we would, we would ask for up to a hundred thousand dollars to have the pool open this season. And the question that I had is, uh, Councilmember Palmer mentioned, uh, needing that pool open. If we did make June one, would we need to have that pool open? And what is the expected life, lifeline of that pool with the, the planning processes we have in place at this time?
Well, I guess I'm, I'm trying to say that the finding process needs to slow down, that next week, I don't think you're going to have four votes for this plan. And so without a, a pool paid for in this plan, and we found one point eight million dollars, if I have four people willing to do that. I think that that's important. I, 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 I just find it hard to believe that the city of Rochester, and, and I know that I got over a hundred emails. That says, you know, that, that we're three times the size we were in nineteen sixty. And we're going to go down to one pool. I, I don't see that, that the need for one, pools have gone down. And I don't, we're not looking at a large pool. We're looking at eight lane, twenty-five yard pool that you can teach swimming in. You can swim laps in, that you can, you can do water aerobics in. And, you know, you've got six plus age bracket, but what, what do the twelve year olds do? You know, I mean, and so if this is a funding thing, I think we've come up with two solutions for the funding. And so I, I'd rather do it right. And I've been in that, that pool house. It's not a good pool house. And right now your plan is to use it for storage and you're adding four bathrooms. The other item that we've talked about in the past that we're not doing in this plan is we need to have an all season, year around bath, this bathroom facility. We have three links and our biggest park probably used is three links. Why don't we have a winter bathroom, um, that they can use at, at this location? And with the new building, we can do that. I mean, the skylights are busted out of this building. There's, there's, I mean, I've showered in, it's not a great place to be in.
I agree.
Have you done any estimates so far of what it would be to get a pool in the ground of eight lanes?
We came prepared, uh, with estimates to talk about that.
Let's get it on the table before we move through our questions, as I'm sure others want to know.
So a new pool is about two point five million dollars. A new bath house, about one point five million dollars. Those are rough numbers depending on the location you end up choosing. If you choose Silver Lake, the parking lot's already there, obviously. You plan on taking the hill down, that's on top of that. You gotta add some more dollars for that. Um, different access points, et cetera. Sidewalks, those all cost more money, so.
So two point five in addition to? The four million? Or if you replace?
Just want the pool. It's two point five million dollars. Want the bath house, one point five million dollars. Assuming you're at Silver Lake and you're not doing regrading, you can build it all right there. So you've got four million dollars. How do you want to allocate that? Or do you want to add to that? I mean, what council member was talking about is adding one point two or one point eight million dollars. That won't quite get you there. But again, it's a matter of where the money's coming from.
Okay, I have other questions, but others are ahead of me. So Councilmember Keen, go ahead.
Okay, again, and I'm going to go to the whole thing now and not just talk about the pool discussion, okay? Just to make sure in case we didn't want. Hey, again, I'm, I'm glad to see this here today and coming forward with the idea that back last, well, October of twenty twenty-two. We had quite a spirited thing about how to bring this money to bear on the future stuff. And there was the Soldier's Field and then this one, and then we redid it again in January of twenty twenty-three. And we gave you guys guidance to go out and come back with a plan. And that's where we're at right now. And so this idea that we're going to re, redo it on the fly feels a little unsafe. Couple of questions on things like splash pads. I have, uh, have not seen the new splash pad in North. I've seen splash pads in other communities and they're dramatically different. Is there some, like some example, one I could go to within a hundred miles of here that says this is what we're looking like?
Good question. I don't know that answer. There's, there's many around.
I don't.
Based on what the community has asked for.
Yeah, they're very different and.
As a scale, sorry about that. As a scale, we have Lincoln Shirets in, in place right now, existing condition. This is about twice the size of Lincoln Shire. So give you a scale of what's out there today versus what's, this is planned to be.
Okay. Is this a, a splash pad that is running all the time or is this on demand? Kids walk up and hit the button and water starts?
Both. So there'll be something that will be operational almost all the time, but again, you'll be actuating certain activities.
So it is, it is like an, an all the time sort of, I'm surprised to hear that.
I'll verify that. Um, we did talk about the actuated, you know, pigeons go and press a button and it'll start certain activities.
So if anybody does know something like that, like up in, uh, Blaine, they have this thing and it's a lot like ours. This idea of looking at these pictures just doesn't help me. I just don't have that sort of, um, design mind that I can look at that. But again, I'm, I'm not trying to weigh in and change it. I just want to make sure I know what I'm progressing on. At first I was a little surprised by the lack of playground equipment on that. This is a park area or the number four area. But then I'm, obviously there's this huge park there with Three Links Park. Is, is, what is the history that that is branded differently and it is a different park?
It was fundraised by several service organizations. Uh, Lions Club was predominantly doing that. That's kind of what drove that part of that conversation. I will tell you on the west side here though, we've had two playgrounds. One was done by Saratoma back in the day, like thirty-five or forty years ago. And just kind of aged out. We did not replace that. The one we currently have on the west side is also aging out from a, a safety standpoint. It's also been damaged over the years by some other activities, trees, uh, et cetera. So again, having one bigger facility, it will not rival the one on the east side, but it's still a pretty good sized playground area.
So there, there is no, uh, in the next ten years rebranding that and just part of Silver, Silver, Silver Lake. It just can't happen because of the, the history?
We could rebrand it, but there's.
But there'd be opposition because there was groups that fundraised and did that. I, I, I'm just trying to understand. I don't know the history.
I think I would just say it this way, is that people know it as that. Why rebrand it? There's no harm in it being the way, the way it is. So.
Yeah, all right. I, I just see the big parking lot there and we're going one way to Silver, Silver Lake and the other way to something else. It just feels, feels odd. All right, we, and I did see that your, the park, park board, Park and Recreation Board did do this, um, motion to, get, get this thing back with the idea of, uh, dealing with the parks. I, I want to make sure I understand this. We get into these discussions of capital and we don't talk about operations. But I don't, I mean, I understand pools as expensive things to build in Minnesota and things that we don't use that long. But can I get a feel for, um, operations too? Like you just talked about, let's, I'm going to call it four million dollars. That, um, we may end up saying, we can do it for that. What did I do to my operations budget? Does it, does, running a pool from the summer, does it pay for itself? Does it, uh, what, what would I, what would I be doing?
Aquatics overall for the community is a, is a subsidies activity. That's just a plain and simple act, uh, you know, thing we know. Right now, I think when we look at the old Soldier's Field, Soldier's Field Pool and the old Silver Lake Pool. We're subsidizing that by roughly a hundred and thirty thousand, someplace in that range every year. That's not including lifeguards that were out there.
Close then?
Yeah. So in that range, if we add a lifeguard, which the swim club provides, their great partner, they do the swimming, uh, lifeguards out there. They get, they gather concessions, they do that activity, the daily day activities. If we were to bring that back in-house, there's additional costs for that. Again, does it offset by the revenues coming in for Soldier's Field? Yes, no, maybe. We aren't quite sure. Answer your question.
Yeah, finish.
So splash pads have a different scenario altogether where it is total subsidy. There's no concessions, but there's no lifeguards either. It's just an operational activity.
Right, right.
Our first one went in this past year, twenty twenty-three. Um, there's some learning curves with that. Again, there, there's a cost factor for that. It is a staff portion that, that works on that on a daily basis, goes and specs it, tests the water. Verifies it's all operational, would bring it up to speed that it's used for the day, go back again the next day, bring trash and et cetera. There's costs for everything we do. And again, the splash pad in this case will take some more time, but it should be less time than what the pool was. And again, we're going anecdotally here because we're not, we've never operated these before.
No, but, but I, I, you're, you're answering my question though, because I, I mean, I know there's a capital side to this obviously. But I thought there was a bigger operational side to running pools, that it was more expensive operationally. And the, and we're sitting here trying to either bring new money to the table or trade-offs to get a pool in place. But I, I wanted to understand if that was then on the operation side, you had to swizzle again to fit that into your operations budget.
Well, in reality, we do have staff that are on our staff right now that work on the pool. So we aren't allocating those differently. When Mr. Bolt's team goes the, the recreational side of things, that's covered the recreation budget and the pool operations. But we still go out there on a daily basis and manage a lot of those things under our current budget by our team.
Okay. So you've heard some different things. Yeah. You've heard some different things here, but I, I'm kind of, what I'm hearing from my peers, I think, is that we're not ready to go with this plan until we resolve this other question. Or can we go with this plan and then work the other question? Or is there something like strategically or execution wise, uh, bad about starting this work and then trying to assess the pool work?
So I'd answer it this way. We can go forward and start doing the plan right now. And at some point in time say, we want to build a pool here. We can do that one year from now, five years from now, ten years from now. We can still do that. There's a cost to that to remobilize our team, the contractors, redesign the, the pump house or add to the pump house area, um, et cetera. There's a cost for construction working that tight, tight area. If you did it all in one shot right now, you'd save some money. How much money? I can't tell you that answer. But there are some savings there by doing it all in one shot.
So I, my concern then from what I've been hearing now is that I, I would like to start work on Silver Lake in twenty twenty-four. But it's feels like we're not going to be able to do that until we resolve this question. I think that's what I heard. Now, I, I can't, I can't tell you that's what we did. But if I'm trying to make those, I would want to see that both the capital costs are obviously important and the sources for those. Cause I believe they are going on the, call it bonding, call it something. It's on the credit card if that's how we're going to do that. So let's make sure we know that and let's all get comfortable that, okay, those kind of decisions raise taxes. And we have to all know that. We can't be act surprised when it gets to be November, um, and we, and we're doing that. But I also want to make sure I have the right operational model for what kind of impacts I'm having to operations.
Could I clarify the operational that's in your twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget? Because I recall that what actually occurs, because you have a very different pool coming your way with Soldier's Field being renovated. That some of the operational costs that had been allocated to operating Silver Lake actually are absorbed for the, the, expanded operation of Soldier's Field with having it be larger and need more staff capacity to be able to address that. So it's not like a million dollars, but there will be an operating impact if you have two pools. Just like anything you do, which is a policy decision of whether or not that's the best allocation of additional tax levy.
This is what I want to understand because I want to make sure we're clear headed what we're doing as, as we operate and, and make sure we have those kinds of things. So I appreciate it.
If I may.
Yes.
More thing is the staffing and, uh, Mrs. Elms talked about the staffing impact on us. Right now we're going into Soldier's Field Pool. We're making the assumption we're opening up in June and making this a, a great thing for the community. We don't know what the impact will be on our staff to make sure that works. We think it's going to work. We think it's going to operate just great, but there's a lot of unknowns. I mean, brand new facility.
Yep.
First in our, in our, in our history for our community. So again, a lot of unknowns. You want to tack on now Silver Lake, which has a lot of knowns, which aren't good by the way. If something goes bad, we are going to be, you know, in a lot of trouble. That's just the reality.
Thanks. I, again, I, I wanted to do a little bit of a, I, I, I do have a concern that if we miss our June first date, what options do we have to open up? But I think that, I think what you're telling me is if we get to that point, we'll deal with it as opposed to, there's a contingency plan. Or we're going to plan to have that ready to go. There's a contingency plan or we're going to plan to have that ready to go if we need it.
I will tell you that if we wanted to have a contingency plan for Silver Lake, we gotta spend money upfront to make sure we change valves out. I mean, last year our team was using winches and cuply. So we're spending thousands upon thousands of dollars to make that safe for our team to work in even.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bransford.
So addressing Mr. Keen's point, I'm not here to ask for this plan to be changed on the fly. I'm asking for it to be changed. And not by me, but I'm gonna ask some questions. You talk about community input, all right? So did you engage the participants of the Able Rec program? And I don't mean the participants. Did you actually go to day programming, sit with those kids and ask them their opinion?
We did not, no.
Why? That is an integral part of Able Rec programming. This change has a significant negative impact, unequitable impact on Able Rec programming. Hold on. So I really want to understand, given the impact to a very, very important stakeholder. Why they weren't asked?
I'll just tell you, we we did ask those members that are involved in our community with those stakeholders. So again, whether it is Accessible Rec, our internal department, whether it is other community members that help run the programmatic activities. So we sought out their opinions and their their guidance. So we did do that.
Since this is a big surprise to a lot of my friends and family who have children with disabilities, I question that.
Can I comment to that? Thank you, President Carlson. Councilmember Bransford, part of this is. Uh, we, you know, the plan was to that we would one day close Silver Lake Pool. The programming would would go elsewhere and that adaptive rec programming can fit at Soldier's Field Pool. And in fact, they would have more offered to them through doing that.
Okay, so two points. Thank you for that. And I and I understand that's the direction. However, they operate out of the old firehouse. That pool is a short walk. Now they have to bus. The changing rooms at Soldier's Field are insufficient for large groups of kids with these kinds of cognitive delays and physical delays. They're gonna, you're gonna take a huge hit on the amount of time they have to bus there, change going in slow. Change coming out slow and bus back. You may as well eliminate swimming from the Able Rec programming. The kind of pinch that puts on their time. So if we're gonna do that, give them a home that's nearer, right? How about having us fix up the old firehouse so that it's a little bit more spiffed up for that program? I mean, we we've had this issue from one twenty five live tunnel. And I and I'm very frustrated, obviously, and I'm very disappointed. So.
We can come back. We can come back.
My last question and my last hope is. I have, and I believe others have, sat here and asked about not just Able Rec, okay? That's my issue. There are clearly a lot of emails from people about swimming lessons. Negative impacts to lower economic strata. They they without swaying lessons. They prefer they they more preferently die without. So it's not just about Able Rec. There's a lot of other considerations. So and that's been articulated here. Ms. Dennis has has beat that drum on the safety of children and God bless it. That is absolutely true. So I don't understand why we're not seeing an an option for a pool replacement. You pulled out those numbers. Great. You knew it was gonna be asked. Why wasn't it in the plan? And I, you know, we we hear, oh, it's not in the plan. This is following our plan. But you've heard from this council a desire for that as an option and it's not there. That's unacceptable.
So I I'll just say, I'm just gonna say this. I think some of the challenge that we face is that we're trying to balance all of these foundational principles. Which include financial sustainability. And so what was allocated, that doesn't mean that this council can't change it. But know that that has financial implications across your budget, which I can't show you exactly what that is today. But it will impact your your levy projection, which is has happened before and will happen again for any variety of things. But the council approval for moving this forward included four million dollars of accelerated funding. So it included a number. It and that if you take all of this off of the table and just spend it on a pool. You will need to have more than that four million dollars. So I think that's what is trying to be articulated here. And if this wants to change completely, that's fine, but we've also had a change on council. So there's been a number of moving parts that have happened between this starting and kicking off and coming to what was a slightly different council makeup to today. And so, you know, we're trying to balance all of those things, recognizing that. If we wanted to fix all of those things at once, you probably need twenty million dollars. And that's challenging to come by and then whatever operating costs are necessary for that. So I think what the Parks Team is looking for is is feedback on whether or not to move forward at all. I mean, if they're coming forward to, there is currently accelerated funding of four million dollars that we're planning, that we did bond for. Did we already bond for that, Mr. Parrish? So like, we need to meet our bonding obligations in order to continue to spend those dollars. Because that was part of the accelerated investment plan. If there's a desire to only build a pool, which. Or to somehow come up with another six million dollars or to not have any splash pads here. Like, we need some clarity on that and some kind of real accelerated process to understand what the implications are. For your twenty twenty five supplemental budget and beyond in order to make sure that you're comfortable actually voting on what that type of increase might mean.
And that's exactly my, I'm sorry, Ms. Alms, and you're you're making very good points and I appreciate everything you just said. That's why I want the options. What's the cost differential? What's the financial impact? I mean, you sit there and say six million. We hear two and a half million to replace the pool as is. We have numbers floating around. We have nothing in this plan that gives us some substance, some meat, some there there to make that decision.
And that's because when the last time the Parks folks came to present the initial phase of the plan. It showed a potential future pool like it does today and didn't have any funding for that. So. And I think I wish we'd had this discussion a year ago, but now we're having it now. And so that puts us in the position we're in now. And I think I'm hearing it's not just the options for how much it costs. It's the potential funding scenarios and what that would mean were. Either the impact on the levy or in exchange for the neighborhood parks we're funding through the yearly referendum. I mean, a real understanding of what the implications are of adding that number for us to make a policy decision. So I think that's what you're saying, Councilmember Bransford.
Exactly.
Okay.
Frustrations aside, I can't I can't just take one option without understanding everything you just very articulately put.
And with the study that was requested or the further engagement through the resolution. Would that potentially be part of it coming back with some scenarios of how what the cost or how it could be funding could be? Or could we consider adapting it as such?
Uh, yeah, the the, thank you, President Carlson. And the the resolution attempts to. Uh, open that door for us to look at funding options. We 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 listed in there. Public-private partnerships, you know, every partnership that we have in for major programs and facilities has been. Included an investment. Could there be a community fundraising for a second pool? We we.
Ready. Creative.
Yeah, we we looked at that. I think when we did present this over a year ago. There was discussion about a second pool. There wasn't discussion about how that would move forward. The budget remained the same when we left here. So that is how we're here today. If I could, I would like to address. Uh, Councilmember Bransford's programming questions and concerns. I realized it has been a great convenience for adaptive program to walk to the pool. That's been a great tradition throughout my career and colleagues all around the country. Transportation is a part of after school and summer programming. Uh, it's it's not unusual at all to transport. Participants in the adaptive program and we we have done that and we will continue to do that. We we go to activities throughout the community and whether it is family, parent driven. Or sponsored by the department, we we will continue to provide that. And that's why that became somewhat of a clear option. Because that is a program that can fit nicely at the Soldier's Field Pool.
Thank you for that explanation. Councilmember Bransford, are you done to, ready to pass it on?
As I said, it's not just the Able Rec community. It's it there's a lot more to that equation. So I appreciate what you're saying. But give them a little bit better options for changing rooms if you're gonna bus them there.
If I could address that as well, there there actually is a lot of thought that went into the the changing rooms at the Soldier's Field. Pool to to be able to accommodate any kind of a variety of special needs and disabilities.
Councilmember Wall.
If I may, sorry.
Go ahead and then.
Note before we jump into Councilmember Wall's comments. We we are talking about a pool in this location or splash pad in this location. But if we're looking at. What we should really be doing from a community standpoint, is this even the right location? It was right, you know, a long time ago, but again, the community's changed, evolved and modified over time. That we ought to give due consideration if a second pool or third pool is gonna go in, what is that right like right location? So I just wanted to bring that up.
Like you mentioned McMillan, McMillan? McMillan, sorry. As a southeast option. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Wall.
I have been impressed with the unanimity of the emails and other communications that we have received on on this topic. Usually, my experience, limited as it is, well, no. Forty-one years as a in in a church where there were plenty of opinions on both sides of many issues. But my experience on the council is that at least there's a few that will speak to the other side of the issue. And unless I've gotten a different set of communications than the rest of you have. The community is unanimously. What?
One against.
Okay, I I did not see that one. Many maybe came late. Unanimously for keeping a pool at Silver Lake. Additionally, I'm having some of the same math problems that Mr. Palmer has. Uh, if St. Charles with a population of four thousand has an aquatic center. And Casson with a population of seven thousand has an aquatic center. And we with one twenty-five have an aquatic center that that just doesn't add up for me. In the way of providing opportunity for our youth and some adults. So I would stand in support of Mr. Palmer's suggestion.
Thank you, Councilmember Wall. Councilmember Dennis, then Kirkpatrick.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so I I don't have to reiterate my support of pools. I've mentioned that many, many times in past council meetings. That pools save lives. People need to learn how to swim and disproportionately populations who are marginalized. And and people of color have died because of not knowing, not having the ability or access to. The access to be able to have swimming lessons. So I think by far we need a pool and there's no question. I don't want to support a project that does not include another pool. So I can go on and on about how we're a wellness city, how pools prevent crime by getting people things to do. By places of belonging, helping mental health. Oh, my goodness, you just go on and on and on about how important pools are. I just can't, I can't stress that. So I definitely want to see a second pool. And but I also wanted to cover some of these other issues too. I think security reasons, make it with bath houses and stuff. I don't know about cameras. I have a few questions here, but the first one. Are there gonna be cameras outs outside, making sure that some crime and stuff that they've happened at other restrooms and parks does not happen here?
So cameras at parks overall, I'll tell you that currently, no, there's no cameras planned at Silver Lake. There's a fiber optic lines that are necessary to provide camera support for our police department. That goes for Soldier's Fields, Silver Lake, Cascade Lake. Pick your major parks. It's an operational issue we're working towards, but we don't have that many parks right now.
Okay, because I know some of these wonderful ideas of splash pads. I know my kids for fifteen years have been going to Silver Lake. And I know there's a lot of improvement still needed for Three Links Park and security for, you know, making sure kids are safe and in all of our parks. But I actually never even knew that we didn't have a splash pad when I was first moved here in two thousand and seven. Because my kids and I, we use Northgate with, I I'm not sure if other families do. But you just you hit the button, you get that shower of water and my kids have had splash pad since we've been living here. For over fifteen years. So, you know, that was, to my knowledge, was a very economic way. Of having splash pad right there in Ward Six. But I was hoping maybe, I was hoping there's other splash pads like that. Other around Rochester, I have gone to Leekenshire. Um, I think splash pads are needed for the population that utilizes that. And that would not be my children's age or a lot of children who are preteens and teenagers who need that pool. So I definitely am supportive of a splash pad, but we we absolutely need a pool again. Also, things like D E I, dog parks, things like that. I talked to, there's some some cultural situation. Where we we start to combine things. I just want to make sure that that has been put into awareness. Kind of throwing out some stuff, so I apologize, because I don't want to use up too much time. But skate park, I've watched a documentary on how active and amazing skate parks have been in other communities. So I'm so happy to see improvements being done at that aspect. I feel walking paths with wellness, always having a walk path around. Um, so that parents or caregivers can make laps and keep their kids safe while getting exercise themselves, I think is very important. When we look at the, I I want to make sure I get the word right, confluence area, confluence area for cultural events and things. I I'm speaking from a PTA parent. I be on the PTA when Churchill Hoover did their outdoor classrooms. Very, very inexpensively made outdoor classrooms that look very similar to what is being proposed. So I don't know if you've reached out to the school district to see how how innocent it very effectively and inexpensively. They have done similar, and it's not the same, I get, but they use the stones to make circular places and amazing places. Where students can have classrooms outside for like incredibly cheaper than what is proposed here. So I just want to throw that out. And then, well, golly, there's a lot of questions, but I think, yeah, just the for. The idea that we don't have money and I think that's the biggest obstacle I'm hearing is the budget. I would have to challenge that because I have brought up several, several times about blatant wasting wasteful spending. And I think that we have the money, we're just not using our money effectively. So I feel that if we can reevaluate, and I don't have, you know, the ability to audit and look at every single department. But I think the money is there and I think this is a priority to have equitable a place where people from all walks of life. And in neighborhoods to have a second pool, it saves lives, prevents crime. I mean, you just look at the win, 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 win of having a pool here is is, you know. It's something that we need to seriously find the funding. And last council meeting, I talked about how, you know, we we discussed how staff are going everywhere, getting grants. I I can't imagine there's not grants out there somewhere with the creative minds that we have on this amazing city team. That can't find more grants to fund this kind of project and and of course then going into the budget, which. Uh, council members aren't always accessible to information about the budget, as I found out. But finding out on a level where we can find how we can find this money without impacting the tax levy, I think it's possible. So those are my thoughts, but I I those are questions I kind of threw out there about about equity and things. I don't know if you want to add on to any of those comments, but I do, I will not support a project that does not have a pool and I think it is doable. So besides the pool, all the other, I mean, all the other issues are there looks at looking at making this more of a. I don't know, like making this doable for all cultures and all, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm I'm rambling now. But what, anything to add on those thoughts?
I think we should start at the end. All of the budget information is accessible to the entire public on a publicly accessible website. Held by the that you can go to at rochestermn.gov. So anybody that's watching that, they can go there, hit the finance department. We have multiple presentations there as well as a flipping book and a lot of detail. There's also a government access where you can delve into all of the expenses that have happened into the budget. That's accessible also on our website to anyone. It's called Open Gov. You can also find that on the finance section of the website. So anyone is able to go and do that. So anyone that's listening in the public, you are welcome to do that. It is out there and just want to point that out to everyone.
Point of point of clarification, it's not just the budget information, but it's information such as when I asked how much did the illegal center cost?
President Carlson, let's move on.
It's probably fifty, sixty. Please do not override me. That's a legitimate.
This is your first warning. If you do it again, you're gonna be asked to leave. All right, if there are responses from our park staff to any of Councilmember Dennis's points, please. All right, if there are responses from our park staff to any of Councilmember Dennis's points, please weigh in.
Thank you, President Carlson. I think Administrator Selms handled the financial questions. I wish people would look into that. I think they'd find we run a very efficient department and I have nothing to offer as to what we, excuse me. That is a big question. If we were to find the funds within our CIP, I would really want that to be a partnership that we'd have to decide what we're not going to do to make something else happen. And right now, we don't have that kind of leeway and that's my answer.
All right, Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate you working on a tight budget. I am really impressed with our park system. We have a killer park system and what you all do every year, day in and day out, to keep the trails open, to make sure that we've got some chemical free parks, to make sure that things are maintained and safe for youth features or adults using the youth features. You guys are doing a great job and I thank you very much for that. I however, am landing with the voices of my colleagues sitting up here and I want to back up with what Mr. Bransford said for the disability community. But also I can appreciate that you can work with one of your funded programs, Able Rec, to be able to bus them, but you can't work with the Boys and Girls Club, they're a private agency. And they are not only a economically struggling demographic, they are a BIPOC demographic. And as much as we tout DEI, I'm not seeing the J attached to that one. We dropped a letter when we kind of started working on this stuff. So Boys and Girls Club, I can hear the kids' voices every single time they walk to that pool because I'm just about four, four houses away from 11th Avenue when they go walking up the street to the pool. So I really think we need to find a way to keep this pool open this year so that in the event, we don't get Soldier's Field opened up on June 1st because we don't know. And I believe it was you, Mr. Nigbor, that said that pools are typically a subsidized activity here to the tune of about 130 grand a year.
They are, yep.
Yeah, and thank you, thank you for finding what we need to do that. But is Casson subsidized? Is Chatfield or St. Charles subsidized? You may not know that. Can you find out and get that back to us? It would be.
But not just subsidized, how are they paid for?
Well, that's what I'm getting to. Yeah, that's what I'm getting to. If you could find out how they did what they did, because maybe somehow in our grandeur of awesome staff and knowledge that we have, are we missing a component of that? I don't know, but I hear continuously, we're going to St. Charles, we're going down to Chatfield, we're going over to Casson because our pools are, don't, we just didn't have them. Now, I understand we got an awesome one coming and I'm excited about it. Really practical question, what happened to the equipment that was at Soldier's Field? I understand it's going to take more than just, you know, lag screwing it in to the concrete to get some equipment at Silver Lake, but I've always found it a problem comparing apples to oranges with our two pools. We've got one that's, you know, just pretty much a plain concrete deck with no amenities. And then we've got Soldier's Field over in the southwest corner and they've never had the same amount of amenities. So therefore I can understand why you don't have the amount of pool goers to the northeast pool that you have to the southwest pool. So that's, that's a question I'd like to know. Where is that equipment? Is it ready to be used? Could it be used at the new pool or the renovated Silver Lake pool so that it doesn't have to cost the same amount of money? We're not looking for the exact same kind of new Soldier's Field pool, but something beefed up from what we've had for the last 60 years. And then Silver Lake, yes, thank you. And then lastly, well, I think I covered everything that I wanted to say. Just, just want to reiterate that these are public pools and as you know, being public servants, you know that they need to be ready for anybody at any time and all are welcome at all of our park facilities. So, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Palmer, Keen, Bransford.
A couple of things I just want to touch base on, and pools don't make money. There's not a pool in the area that makes money. I know pools, I teach at pools, I know that, so.
You didn't know you were passionate about aquatics.
Well, okay, well, I'll be more passionate now. You guys have a tight budget. I am not trying to take it out of your budget. I'm trying to get you more funding for a pool and I'm trying to get two pools. And so that's kind of my idea, my thought process. I've been to Lincolnshire, I've watched Lincolnshire, I thought that it was a great addition to the community. I think it needs a pool, but that one's gone out already. Adaptive rec, my boys were in adaptive rec. They love adaptive rec. I drive by Seventh Street and see adaptive rec walking to the pool. It tugs at my heart and yes, I have a heart. So it does tug at my heart. But, 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 you know, bussing, yeah, make a note of that. And, you know, you do have a tight budget. I mean, look at your maintenance facility and one of the things that I've always said about your maintenance facility is that everything out in the world is better than what we have for ourselves. And, you know, I think that that's a compliment to you guys on that. But adaptive rec, you know, I'm just laughing because you say put them on a bus. It'd be hard enough to get us seven on a bus, let alone 20 adaptive rec people on a bus. And with my boys, it's always fun to get them going somewhere. So I, it's not a good idea. And I think you're hearing clearly that if we have the money and I think that what we need to do as a, as a city council is have the staff come back to us with a bonding option or a praying option. And so if it's going to raise your taxes $500,000 or $100,000, we're making a decision that we know. If, if that's, that's my thought. I think we need to have first come back to say that we keep Silver Lake open. What is that going to cost us and where do we get the funds for that? It's not that much. It's already, it should be kind of in the budget. I would like us to start our new pool at, in August, at the same time we do a splash pad. I am not against a splash pad. I don't know if we need a huge splash pad, but we had one at, at Soldier's Field. And the one in Northwest, I've watched that one and if you haven't seen that one, it's a great one and it's wonderful for Northwest. But here at Northeast, we need a better splash pad. You know, and the skate park, I don't want to leave the skate park out of this. They don't have any money into the game. And typically we have, when the tennis people came, the golf people came, and I'll go back to golf. We subsidize golf. Okay, it's not going to make money. We know it's not going to make money. We, but we know the amount. Pools aren't going to make money. But I go to what Mr. Wall said and he agreed with me, which I'm fantastic about. But, you know, 1960, I was born in 1959 when this pool was built, it had 40,000 people. Now, is this the right location? Yes, it's the right location. It meets the neighborhood, it deserves to be there. And so I don't like that discussion. I would like to see us come back with McMillan and put, ask a question, where are we at with a, with a McMillan splash pad? Is that this spring?
We finalized the design now, yes, so it's planned to go out for construction this summer.
Okay, I mean, I would look at that, it may be a future swim pool for us and maybe, you know, we can do a future site and say the water line is going to be this or this is going to be that. I go back to the pool house too. This pool house is pathetic. I'm not particularly sure we need the same pool house that we have. I mean, we can get by with some bathrooms and a shower, but I really like to see it be winterized. I think winterized makes sense. My watch in the park board, they would be tickled pink to have a pool there. They just don't have the money. And I don't think I'm talking out of school on that. And I think, I honestly believe the staff that are standing here wants to have a pool. They just don't have the money. And so it's not us against you, it's us as a city council and it is our decision. It's our decision to have to make and we should make it as a factual decision. But coming back next Monday, unless you can do some really great work in the next five days or two days, because Wednesdays are agenda. I don't know. So I, I'm hearing people are all for more questions and having a pool there and having Silver Lake open. If I'm misspeaking, you know, somebody can say I'm wrong.
I'd like to.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, just a thought. None of what you said about adding a pool, seeking funding for a pool would change the other elements of the plan unless you direct us to change other elements of the plan. So I don't, and I would have to confer with Administrator Zelsa whether next week is possible for all that's going to happen. I just wanted to share, you know, it'd be nice to get some feedback if it's all or nothing or can we proceed with the, the plan that's been presented? Knowing that the discussion with, about the pool is going to be ongoing.
Well, you know, you've always told us it's cheaper to do everything together. That's why we did Soldier's Field. And so I could see keeping Soldier's Field open. I don't know how you don't have Silver Lake open this summer because there's, we don't know. And we could get really inundated with people at Silver, at Soldier. I've been told we can't do swim lessons. There's 400 people with, with, I was, with some other groups that really need to have some lessons. And so that's my pitch.
So for clarification, Councilor Palmer is correct that if you look at it one common type of project, you do it all in one shot. In this case, we're looking at splash or aquatics facility, we're looking at skate park, we're looking at playground. They are actually in the confluence area. They are different components and we surely intend to bid them out at separate types of projects. So again, they aren't going to be done in one project by one contractor.
Okay, I just want to quickly weigh in because I realize I haven't, I don't have a lot to add. I think there's some really good comments and observations we heard obviously from a lot of really passionate people. We also went through a process to get to the plan that didn't include a pool. So I'm trying to think about this at a high level and what the impact is on our overall community. I'm certainly not opposed to having another pool if there is a financially responsible path to get there. So, or if, even if it's not particularly responsible, at least we are agreeing as a body that we're willing to take on that impact. So I think there's enough of a request here to come back.
I would like more clarity. So I just think that the last point that was raised, so the, according to your charter, typically what happens is once you have funding established, the $4 million, this would go, the master plan would go and the master plan has gone to the park board. So there's going to have to be sort of a readjustment of how this continues to move forward because you're receiving what the master, the master plan that the park board looked at and received. So if there's any, if this, if the direction is that, let me think of how to say this. If we can do some work in the next, I'm going to give us 60 days because meetings have to happen and you have a meeting schedule, et cetera, to come back with clarity on options of what would it mean for a, I'm hearing, although I don't know how many people agree with an eight lane, 50 meter pool versus something that might be more accessible, you know, like there's all kinds of different thing, features that you can put into a pool depending on what the priorities are. But like a general decent ballpark figure of what, adding a pool and those amenities would look like, if that's really what's being asked is to place a pool in the area where it says potential pool that is not necessarily the bells and whistles of Soldier's Field, but is a place primarily focusing on a secondary pool opportunity, probably more programming and swim lessons, or at least that's what I heard up here. I think we can do that and then based on that discussion, including different financial scenarios, go back to the park board with that as an amendment to this plan. If there are any significant other changes, granted this whole thing has got all kinds of phases to it, then I think we would need to hear that now because I think it would be unfortunate if we came back and then there was another thing that was changing that required additional funding. There, so that, that's just sort of my feel for continuing to move forward in a manner that meets what this has already gone out for financing for, which has some timelines on it for being able to spend the bonding. It's not like a week, it's, but the further we add on more planning, the further out we are from being able to meet our arbitrage requirements as if we miss it, if we miss a season of building.
Sure.
Right, so I mean, there's just, there's other maneuvers we can take financially, but, so if that's generally the comfort zone, I think we can do that. The secondary thing is, I think that what you're asking us to do by consensus is bring back, I don't know if, I'm guessing you would probably need to have it as soon as possible. And we're using a ballpark again here, we can put a finer pencil to it, $100,000 request for contingency. We can't find that in the budget. That was allocated to operate Soldier's Field in your 2024 operating budget. So 100, a ballpark of $100,000 to open Silver Lake Pool for the 2024 season as best we can. Are those the, is that aligned with what's getting asked?
My, my comment is, is that it's a simple teaching pool that you just described. Eight lane, 25 yards, not any bells or whistles and yes, to keep the, to keep Silver Lake open this year.
However, the Parks Board did ask for further community engagement as part of the resolution, correct? To further define what that pool would be? Isn't that what I, maybe I'm remembering wrong?
We, yes, we, we looked at this as, we didn't plan on moving this fast on this resolution. So we just wanted to, if we were asked to develop plans, we were considering this to be a long-term plan that it would be informed by more community engagement. I, I don't think there's any element in here that is, you know, binding without the others. I think these are more or less ideas to move forward with a plan to come up with a second pool.
So if, if the general, sorry. The general understanding would be, so the reason I kind of described it that way is if we're able to come back and council lands on what is, you know, a ballpark number of additional funding to be able to put forward on top of the current master plan of the $4 million, which again, you can't achieve all of this immediately unless you get grants and other things, even without a pool. Then, and there was some kind of clarity from that, that we would be moving forward, that is part of our budget process. I think what I'm hearing is that you could then have that as a secondary component where you could continue to do some more community engagement on final design of a pool within that constraint, another constraint for another council to get to deliver on. But I think, I think you could do that and I don't know what that does to significantly change your timeline for moving forward with any of this.
Especially if there are elements like the skate park additions, we are wanting to move forward more quickly than waiting for a pool designed to come back.
So again, kind of rehashing just a second. I don't hear conflict about the confluence area. I don't hear conflict about the skate park area. I don't hear conflict about the playground area. If that's a consensus, I'm, I'm good with that. We can move those activities forward.
Oh boy.
And in just a second.
Okay.
So on the aquatic side of things, I heard several things. One is that you want a pool. I get it. We don't, necessarily don't want a pool either. So again, we're not saying we don't want a pool. Funding is the issue. What I did hear from several, I think, is the condition of the bathhouse and that should be taken down or started fresh. And again, I'm raising it because there are cost implications. I threw out $4 million roughly because two and a half plus one and a half, you know, equals four. But again, I'll cover it, those are swag numbers, high, high level numbers that if you're going to tear it down and start fresh, that may be a very cost effective method. Again, I just need to know direction, which way you want to go. Because I can have Andy's team go design a renovated bathhouse. You're going to come back and say, I don't want that, I want something brand fresh new, different conversation, so.
I love the scenario idea, but I know that that has cost implications in putting together as well.
And the reality is, if we want to move forward on, on those other three components, we can do so. If you want to have the conversation around Silver Lake Pool at its location with new bathhouse, we can do that too. We just need to know that answer.
Okay, so we have several other comments, Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, maybe just like.
Oh, sure.
Just tie back to what the team is saying here, but the idea of also thinking about these as two separate projects within the budgets you previously established, I think one other relevant point to that is the bonds were issued about a year ago for that. We do have a timeframe and a window within that as mentioned, but like, you know, we don't want to necessarily get to the wrong side of that either. So we'll verify that timing as we bring forward the different, you know, potential solutions. But if you're approving a master plan, you're saying that you don't want to change any of the other items that were previously identified, like playground replacement, skate park, et cetera. You know, being able to bifurcate those and develop a funding strategy that walks along it, just, there is a notion that we have a timeframe and we're on a clock.
Yeah.
So I just want to continue to read.
That makes sense to me, but I will let my colleagues weigh in. So Councilmember Keen, are you ready?
Yes. So my, my thing is, you know, again, just stepping back here, I try to make sure I've got the bigger picture of what's going on here. But I followed these park and recreational master plans going back to, I think, Mike, I think you presented them to us at the YMCA board back in about 2012. And these master plans are only of value if they have these constraints on them like budgets. And it is my understanding back 10 to 20 years ago, combination of park boards and that kind of looked at pools as something they wanted, but also said, but other things were higher priority. And that's where we got a plan that said, not only do we want to have one pool, we want to have one awesome pool and we want to like really invest in it. And as some people said up here, we are a wealthy community. We had the, we had the great luck of having a DMC be able to come to us with an extra $10 million so that we made a major, major project there. So we are a wealthy community. We can add this to our, and I call it the credit card. Because I hear talk about grants and the. Because I hear talk about grants and this stuff, but I go to Stewartville and go to Cass and ask them about their plans. They don't get outside money to do parks or pools. They, they tax for it. And it's my understanding, that's where this is going to come from. There's two parts of the taxes. That's like, how are you going to build it and how are you gonna run it? And I, and again, for something coming to me, I want to see both parts of that. I, I've heard over and over about this is a learning swimming pool. And this is a, a, an asset that's so important for the, you know, that equity and to make sure we're like doing all we can to keep kids safe while they're with us and as they leave the community by having these sort of skills. I have seen these learning swimming pools and that's not what this one is. The learning swimming pools are, you know, three and four feet and they're tiny little things and they're dry, sit in between them. And if that's really what we are asking for up here, that's what we should get. What I see here is a lap swimming pool. And, and I, I don't see it as as great like summer asset to the community that, you know, a lot of people are gonna go to. I, I go back to like the twenty twelve when the YMCA was down running Silver Lake because you guys didn't want to do it anymore. Now, Councilmember Palmer knows a lot about that. He was heavily involved in it. But there was, they were looking at the numbers back then. There was no uptake and usage on Silver, on Silver Lake. And that's why it was kind of considered like, this isn't the place we're going to invest in. Now, we can always debate that the low numbers came from, it was a crappy asset. If we had just put money into it, then that'll come. And I, I don't want to weigh in on that. I, I don't know. I've, I, I I like to make decisions based on the data we have and the data we had said it wasn't a well-used asset. Councilmember Wall asks about the opposition. Our mail's running ninety to one for this. And I, you know, I'll tell you, I, the opposition comes when we say we have a fourteen percent levy increase and just start talking about that next September. Right now, we know, we're sitting here knowing without changes, we're probably still already at eight percent based on what we did with, with labor negotiations over the last year and some of the things we had to do to keep certain skills around. We know we're in an area where there's inflation and we're, we're gonna pay for that. That's where you'll see the opposition to this because I, I hope we get some sort of grant and this is built without us having to do it. And I hope we find some really efficient ways, but that's not how I'm approaching this right now. I'm approaching this as we are spending money. And I, and I want to make sure this is how it happens. This is how you get to the end of the year and say you, you need to raise your levy this much. And it's, it's by having discussions like this. As far as simplifying the decisions, I, I, I really do struggle with that. I want to get, I want to keep the cadence of our park referendum money going and I want to prove what would you're bringing to us tonight. And I'd like to keep this separate and I'd like to keep the twenty twenty four pool separate. But I don't see a way to do that right now from what I'm hearing. But that's my weighing in and, and I'll talk to anyone about it. I don't know if you guys have anything to add to this.
If I may, uh, two, two items for you. So the swimming pool itself, the eight lane, twenty five yard. That was talked about and, and vetted out with the swim club. So again, that's what they thought they needed to have, provide the swim to, swim for young kids, et cetera. That's where that came from. Again, if you're thinking about a smaller pool, we just need to know that answer, what people are looking for. But we're going on the guidance of the swim club saying we need, that's what we need.
What, what, what I'm responding to is the language up here is lessons and everything else and what I'm building doesn't match it. That's, that's what I'm trying to get out in the open.
Got it. The second thing is, is looking for grants. Again, we can look for grants for a lot of our parks because there's money out there. We've talked to DNR, who was a, a great supporter of, of grants for our community. What we've done so far, we've gotten it for, for McQuillan, we've gotten it for Lincolnshire. They support the splash pad concepts. They understand the challenges with pools. They've not been willing to support those so far. So again, that's why we're not putting our eggs in that basket.
Yep.
Again, I could be wrong. They may say, oh, it's a great need. We'll, we'll support this one, but I can't make any guarantees on that.
No, no. And I, I have looked into Stewartville and places like that. And Councilmember Palmer knows this. There's not a pool in the country that pays for itself, never mind in Minnesota. We're open for about three months. Yeah, so I.
All right, we're gonna move on to our next. All right, Councilmember Bransford.
Um, so I, I have a question about, I'm listening to all the numbers flying around. So on page slide number four, where it talks about phase one, location, feature, cost, okay? Three million for a splash pad, but I think I heard you say two and a half million for replacing the pool. Is that right?
Yeah, so.
So the, the differential is it's five hundred thousand dollars less to replace the pool than to build a splash pad. Is that right?
Yes and no. If I may clarify. This was in the master plan document that they were laying out to say, we want a grand splash pad to make it a, a great thing for the community because it's not going to be a pool. Um, yes, a pool is two point five million dollars by itself. So less than the three million dollars you see on the paper up there in front of you. But again, what you're getting for amenities was totally different and incomplete. This master plan dollars is we gave for, for reference, saying they asked for seven million dollars back in phase one when we adopted the plan. We knew that was not a reality. We knew we had four million dollars to kind of play with, but to, to allocate our project from. We scaled those back to be more realistic in what I showed you on the very last screen, which was, you know, a million and a half dollars for the splash pad. Half of what they had proposed in the, in the master plan. So again, we already recognizing that deficiency in funding and trying to address it.
Okay, so if I were to say scratch the splash pad, put in the pool replacement at two hundred and, two, two point five million dollars. That bottom line subtotal is going to be a half million dollars smaller.
And that would have.
And still larger than what you have to allocate.
I, I, but it's cheaper. That's my point. That's, that's what I'm throwing out there is it's less expensive.
Right, but that kind of approval, as Minister Zelms said, would have to go back to the park board. You couldn't approve that.
Yep, fine. And again, these were master plan numbers, not the refined numbers I agree with you later in the slide deck.
So one thing I do want to say is, I know, I'm sorry. Park and rec in this town is awesome. Okay, so don't, don't get me wrong. If but for park and rec, the ABLE rec program that we have, which is second to none, wouldn't exist. So thank you. And I have worked with you two since my big tirade at one twenty five live about ABLE rec programming there up until now. So all the respect, all the respect for running a great program, okay? I do want to take a little umbrage with this whole, yeah, we'll bus them to Soldier's Field, okay? It is the right location and, okay, so I when those children are bussed and young adults are bussed to Silver Lake or to Soldier's Field, come and watch. Okay, seriously, I, I'm not, and I'm, I, this is totally not, I'm not being pedantic. It takes a long time. We're not talking about a typical population. We're talking about kids in wheelchairs. Other children that, you know, take a long time. Whereas if you go and watch them walk to Silver Lake and walk back, that's pretty quick. So I, I don't think, or no, let me rephrase. It is not a good idea if they're based out of the old firehouse to bus them. And I do hope that the changing rooms at Soldier's Field are amenable to a group of twenty or thirty kids who cannot go by themselves into these changing rooms, but need to go in small groups. So I, I hope that if, if I fall on the losing side of this and you do bus them there, that you time it. And, and come back to me and say, okay, yep, we're gonna bus them there. And this isn't a huge bite out of their programming because it will be. So.
Just briefly, I, I just hope my marks, remarks weren't just, that's too bad. They have to get on a bus now. I, like I said, it's based on experience and all over the country after school and, and summer program participants of all abilities are bussed to activities. It's, it's a luxury to be able to walk to something. And I'd love to see that continue, but the reality is that transportation is a industry option.
But this is a very different community. I mean, the thing that gets locked.
Talk into your microphone.
And with all due respect, Paul. It's just not the same for the ABLE rec community. It's just not.
I, I agree with the tradition we've established. It's been phenomenal. I love walking with them to the program. Having that fire station has been just a great addition to the program. I agree with everything you're saying. But how to make all this work and, and with the budget and, and other restraints we have, that is an option. So I, but I totally, I, I respect what you're telling me. So thank you.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick, then Palmer, then Dennis.
Thank you. I have not put my Lorax hat on yet. And I'm going.
Oh, I was wondering.
Here it comes. I'm going to completely disagree with you, Mr. Widman. It is not a luxury to walk to a park. When our silent generation and our greatest generation is the minority of the population in ten years and you've got all these young folks up here that are wondering where their clean water is gonna come from? That are wondering why we don't have a denser tree canopy? Walking is what we're supposed to be doing. We tout sustainability and resiliency? No, we're not supposed to be driving kids across the city to a pool. Wrong. So I humbly disagree with you. Respectfully, disagree with you. The densest housing in our city surrounds Silver Lake Pool. Not Soldier's Field Pool. So you can cater to a larger demographic with Silver Lake Pool than technically you can with Soldier's Field Pool. The basketball, love the idea, but Mr. Palmer's kind of right. The, the court at MLK is kind of the OG basketball court in the city. Still asking for a light there, nothing too expensive. Hit the button and it stays on for another half hour. That would be great. But I love the addition of the basketball court. I just think it needs to be west or northwest of the skate park because I think it would be really beneficial to keep the same footprint for the future Silver Lake Pool. Because it's cheaper to build in Seachu than moving a bunch of tur- dirt around and everything else. And that dirt was put there to elevate the nineteen fifty nine pool above a floodplain. That's the typical, let's just raise the grade so it's not in the floodplain anymore. So moving the basketball court, which I think we could use another one of, all those B-ball players would love to have one. But keep the pool, the future plan where it is. We need to spend money that adds value to our residents. We need things that add value to our lives. And keeping this pool adds a huge amount of value to the demographic that surrounds that area. I'm gonna say west, west, excuse me, east of the Zumbro, okay? West of the Zumbro, you're adding value with Soldier's Field Pool, but we need one over on the east side. That's it. Thanks.
If I may, just address this, the basketball court location. We had the basketball court actually located north of the skate park area and, and was laying it out that way. And the skate park group came back to us and said, we don't want to be tucked behind everything. We want to be visible and out front. So let me address the vandalism, let me address the, the ne'er do wells that they don't want to have there either. And so they want to be out front as much as possible. Bring that basketball court back towards the, the backside, provide that solution for them, at least in part, maybe not entirely. But again, we're looking at the design by those communities, saying, here's what we want as well. We can move the basketball port, court to the west side of the old skate park if we wanted to. But again, that's where all the amenities are. That's where the bathrooms are. That's where the, the access points are. That's why it got located where it's at. So I just want to clarify that.
That, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you for sharing that. I appreciate it. It's sort of like the drinking fountain that was placed over by the bathrooms at MLK and the B-ball players would have loved to have had it right there in that triangle by the state hospital, you know, tribute. It, it would have been easier for the basketball folks. And then if I could just pick just ever so slightly on the landscape design, Mr. Lam, Mr. Master Pool, just, just a teeny weeny bit.
He's been waiting for it.
He, have you been waiting for it, really? The, the zigzaggy, I get it. Less than five percent grade eighty compliance. But now I see five years down the road, you know, the cut through worn path where there's no turf because people are taking the shortcut. Can we get some concrete shortcuts in there so that we don't have, you know, throwing in seed mix every spring to repair the lawn, et cetera, et cetera. Just take a look at the existing sidewalks and you know, the shortest distance between two points is a straight line kind of a deal. That, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. It's, it's the grates.
No, I know. Yeah.
On a hill, we gotta.
Right, the hill that brought the pool out of the floodplain. Right, thank you.
Right, Councilmember Palmer.
Well, the pool is high because of the drainage for the filter system, not for the floodplain, but that's a difference.
You have to get it out of the floodplain for it to be able to drink.
Okay.
I agree with, but I think I'm, I'm hearing you say all the other amenities to go ahead. I, I think keeping Silver Lake Pool open this year and then starting right away in, in August to get it started for next year, I think bonding somehow come, come back with a number that, that's reasonable, that, you know, in ten years we can pay for this, that, this amount of money. Again, there are no pools that make money. There are people who'll tell you that Cass makes money. It all depends how you, how you add the numbers and subtract the numbers and how you account for things. So I don't expect it to, to park and rec to make money. And, and I didn't expect it on the, on the golf and I don't expect it on the pools, but, but I understand that we need to be reasonable. And I'm all for coming back with a number that says this pool is going to cost you this much money and us to say yes or no. And, and I'm all for, for providing the money for the, for the pool.
For opening.
For opening the pool, keep it an open this year and then for next year, have a brand new pool. And not a fancy pool.
Councilmember Dennis.
Thank you. I would like to just echo what Councilmember Bransford has said about ABLE rec. I, you, you see a lot of things that just say, you know, if, if you make something accessible to people who have a lot of, who have different challenges, it will be accessible to everyone. So we want to make everything that we do in Rochester accessible to everyone. It, it's the most of our ability. So I think taking into, into account all the needs is, is the priority if we are even remotely going to claim that we are anywhere close to a DEI focused city. So I, I do feel that's super important. I also believe that the, that pool needs to stay open this year. Youth and all ages are struggling with mental health tremendously. And we need places for people to go and things for people to do. And so having the pool open, I think will save lives on not just helping people learn to swim, but helping people find community and not fall into the, the spirals of anxiety and depression and other mental health issues that are plaguing our country. And it is a city issue, not just a county issue or school board. It's a humanity issue, mental health. So I feel so important to keep that pool open for many reasons. I sent an email out just quickly to get some numbers checked on how maybe we can find out where money is going and how we can maybe bring some things that are not being used mindfully to be focused on something that will make a great impact. So I hope I get a response from that email and anyone who would like that email, I'm glad to share that with. I also, I just feel that this, we have the money. We need to find them, find out how to make it work and keep the pool open. So. Oh, and I also, I want, don't want to forget, we don't want to punish other groups by saying we are, we're dragging our feet to make sure, we're not dragging our feet, we're making sure we, we do this the right way. So I would like to see that the, the skateboard park, that other places that are able to be done now and in the plan are done as we work out the issues with the pool. Because kids and youth and adults and everyone who uses the skateboard park or uses the other facilities that we're talking about should not have to wait and have detrimental impact because we need to do the pool right. So that's also important. So those are my thoughts. But I, I, again, I think this is something that needs to be done with keeping that pool open for generations to come so that everyone has a sense of, of belonging in community and of course, this amazing place to be. So, thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like it will be on the agenda next week then. That's my understanding.
With clarification of the other steps.
Sound good?
I don't know.
Thanks in advance for all the extra work.
Or bring it when it makes sense.
If we can craft verbiage that I think that covers what you talked about here, we will bring it next week.
Okay, so one path of the school or the pool open for twenty twenty four is what I heard.
That is, will be a separate item from this.
Yeah, three separate things.
Three separate things. So the master plan as it is.
With referencing, which ref, will reference that there will be another discussion beyond the existing master plan to discuss a pool and funding of that.
And then the twenty twenty four timely item.
Use of contingency to open Silver Lake, so operational.
Or other funds that we can find since.
So wasteful spending. Thank you. I'm not going to respond to that. It's inaccurate.
Yeah. Okay, so thank you for hanging in there with us and thank you to the audience who came for in support of the skate park. It's nice to see you here and look forward to getting support for that. So.
Thank you, President Carlson and council members.
Yeah, thank you.
Brought some clarity to this. It's been very productive. Appreciate it.
All right, appreciate your time on this. And Ms. Zellm's study session schedule.
Thank you, Council President, Councilmembers. So.
Thank you, council president, council members. Um, so next week we have, or not next week, at your next study session on the twenty fifth of March, um, we will be, uh, doing a little bit of a deeper dive into that industrial land discussion that was mentioned by community development, um, talking about the growth management plan update. And then, um, the library, uh, team will be coming forward with their draft of their RFP for the, um, space use study that, um, was funded partially by the council and the other part by, um, friends of the library. So just to get your feedback on where they are at with their draft.
Great. Looking forward to it. All right. Thank you, everyone.